The divisions to the flag, the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just to let people know, if you haven't been here before, these meetings are being recorded and broadcast on local cable access television. They are live and available upon demand through ECAT. I'm going to ask the select board members to introduce themselves to ensure we have a forum, starting with Jamie.
Jamie Stebbins.
I'm Jennifer Stacy.
Dottie Fulgenetti.
And I'm Craig Barger.
And we have our town administrator Connor Reed, assistant town administrator Sean Dugan, and executive assistant Elizabeth Heg. We do, this is a hybrid meeting. We do have people that will be on Zoom. If you are on Zoom and you have a question, please put it into the Q and A. Sean will field them over when appropriate. If you do that, please give your name and address for our minutes. And please consolidate your questions into just one comment, so that we don't do a lot of back and forth over Zoom. So the first thing that we have on the, on the agenda tonight is very sad news. We lost our state rep Carol Doherty, who was a really good friend to Easton and a really good friend to us personally on the board. Carol was just wonderful to her constituents. And she has a long history with children, with the community. And I just wanted to take a moment of silence to recognize her and then ask the board members if they wanted to make a comment. So just in memory of Carol. Thank you. Jamie, did you have anything that you wanted to?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm very glad that our colleague Craig was able to be with Carol at her home when she was sworn in for her latest term as state rep, along with the governor, at her house. And that was only about a week, less than a week, before she passed. And so, sorry that I didn't get to say goodbye to her. She was an amazing part of this community for the small portion that she represented. And she was here for all of our Veterans Day, Memorial Day, Purple Heart Day events. So she'll be very missed.
You know, it was really hard to hear that she was ill. And everything happened very fast, so like you, going through a lot of feels of not being able to say goodbye. She was just a wonderful human being, and we were so lucky to have her in that role and that capacity. Like Jamie said, she showed up for every single event. And she put the time into making sure she had just most wonderful things to say and share with the community when she spoke. And you know, as a, as a person, she would just connect with you and talk to you and pick up conversation where you left off. So it's a huge loss for us, both in terms of her representation for the community, but also as a friend.
Yeah, I did write something out. The, the recent passing of State Representative Carol Doherty was not only a terrible blow to her family, but also a blow to our community. Carol was a wonderful, caring human being who dedicated her career to public service. As a teacher, guidance counselor, president of the Mass Teachers Association, longtime member of the Taunton School Committee, and as our state representative, sharing Easton with State Representative Bridget Plouffe. She was an example of the best of public service. Carol was first elected as our state representative in 2020, and again in 2022 and 2024. I had the privilege of representing Easton at her most recent swearing in at her home in Taunton, with Governor Moore Healy presiding, with the entire Governors Council present on Zoom. It was a bittersweet moment. I will miss this remarkable woman terribly, not only as our voice on the Hill, but as a personal friend who cared deeply about the citizens of Easton. I extend to her husband Dennis and her entire family my sincere condolences, and my thoughts and prayers are with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Well, Carol will definitely deeply be missed, and we just wish her family all the best. So, thank you for letting us speak to her. We have some timed items that are coming up. The first one is six o'clock, and this is a recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee to amend Section 502-58 of the Easton Town Code. Schedule number one for no parking zones to add parking restrictions on Morse Road. So I just want to give you a little bit of background information on this. Thomas and Linda Crook of One Morse Road contacted the Select Board requesting implementation of parking restrictions along Morse Road for what they've described as an ongoing safety and parking concern. There have been no reported issues along Morse Road until the fall of 2024, when a surge of non-residential parking began taking place on weekdays. This sudden increase in vehicles parking on Morse Road resulted from a policy change in parking at southeastern Regional Vocational School, which is located across the street. The total number of student vehicles utilizing Morse Road fluctuates, but on average it will range between 20 and 25 vehicles per school day during the daytime hours. The influx of vehicular traffic has led to increased congestion on the road and frustration by the residents as they've been directly impacted by the lack of parking available to students at the regional school. In addition, it directly limits, and in some cases prevents, all parking for those visiting Pine Grove Cemetery. Furthermore, the police department has had several inquiries from residents and school officials about the safety concern of 50, approximately 50, students crossing Foundry Street during the morning and afternoon commute. For the above-mentioned reasons, the Traffic Safety Committee recommends that the Select Board... Well, there's a recommendation on here, but before we get to that, I'm sorry, I didn't read ahead quickly enough. I do want to ask the Traffic Safety Committee to come up so that we can talk about it a little bit more. So, if you want to come up. And I do want to make sure that Jamie, you speak to this first, because you do live in the neighborhood.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Hakeem Moon, the police chief, Dave Field, director of... So you summarized really what, what the situation was. And I do know that Superintendent McClellan just reached out. She's on this call. If, I don't know if she can comment, she may want to say a few words. So in short, you know, it started with our school resource officer getting inquiries from some residents along the road that there were not so much the, the traffic congestion at the time, but there were a lot of kids crossing the street. So I had some conversations with the superintendent, and it turned out they just ran out of spots at the regional, I guess is the easy way to, to put it. So they, they changed the policy right, right after the beginning of the school year, only allowing seniors to park. And so what initially happened was a group of the kids were finding their own ways, places to park, some down near Turnpike and Foundry, some at the sub-shops, and they were having other friends pick them up on the way to school. I believe they got kind of kicked out of those areas because the business owners were like, hey, you're taking up our spot. So they ended up finding Morse Road, and it was out of sight, out of mind until I think that became the norm for the kids that were trying to drive to school. They have jobs after school. They were driving their siblings to school, so they needed, they couldn't just not drive.
Right.
So there's no restrictions on that road. It's a public way. I got inquired a few times and said it's perfectly legal to park there. So that's where the issue became. I think some of the residents got frustrated. The superintendent called me a few times. We've talked. On my end, it was a concern about the kids crossing the street and someone getting hit. That, that's, you know, it's, it's not about parking on the street. We have people parking everywhere, every day. That's just, it's a, it's a tough corner when you're looking eastbound, and you know, God forbid, something happened. So our SRO goes out there, she, she does what she can do, but that's where we were at with it. And I know some residents reached out directly to the board. There's really nothing we could do, other than enforce any restrictions that do get passed. Other than that, it's, again, a public way. You're allowed to park there.
Okay. David, did you want to add anything?
No, I think Chief summed it up.
Jamie?
Yeah, I'll just say it's, it's a tough situation because you've got juniors who are getting their licenses. And so the number of cars will continue to increase throughout the year, because I think every week you probably have a student get, get their license. I feel for the students as well, because as you pointed out, this is a vocational school. These kids, almost all of them work, some of them help provide for their own families while going to school. And they do have responsibilities for their siblings to help give rides and do things like that. So we received a lot of letters from, from students prior to the school year saying, hey, we're in a bind here, not sure what we're going to do. And to your point, when we saw the first one start to cross Foundry Street, which is a 40 mile an hour road, and we all know nobody goes 40 miles an hour in a 40 mile an hour zone. They're going 50 miles an hour. And in the morning time, you do get solar glare as well, when you're looking eastbound. So the superintendent who's on the call is aware of that too. She herself has been driving to school and had issues where kids are crossing. And she's, she goes very slow knowing, but she works there.
Right.
So for the people that don't work there, that are just cruising down Foundry Street, and to your point, now it's close to maybe 40, 50 students that are needing to cross that street. And that number's going to keep going up. It's a real safety issue. So that's a concern of my neighbors who are here, myself. And, but, but I hate to put up these no parking signs, and then these kids are going to find out, they're going to do other things.
The problem down to another area of town.
We're pushing the problem somewhere else, because they have to drive. So here's the next thing that I think we all need to be thinking about is, how do we help the school create new spots to, to park over there? And, and part of it is that they're backed up against wetlands, and so we need to look at some of the setbacks. And can we get creative too, to maybe help the school to find these parking spots? Because this is just not a solution, long-term for the students, and I don't think for the neighbors.
So does anybody know what changed from last year to this year, that all of a sudden this is a problem? Like was there a giant enrollment?
The superintendent is on the call. I, I don't know if she was planning on getting put on the screen with us, but we could ask her if... I can promote her to go a panelist and see if she accepts the...
Okay.
There you go.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you for being here tonight.
Oh, thank you for having me. So I want to just echo Chief Moon's sentiments, that this is really an issue about student safety and not about imposing further restrictions on parking for students. So what changed is, last year, we experienced significant concerns in our parking lot regarding vehicle and pedestrian safety, because we had simply exceeded the capacity of the parking lot. As many of you know, we've grown, our student population has grown about 10% since 2017. And that increase in students, the increase in staffing that goes along with that. The adult student population we serve in our technical institute just overstressed our parking lot. And we have about 615 usable parking spaces on the property, with over 340 employees, 100 adult students. That leaves less than 200 parking spots for our students. And our juniors and senior classes are 800 in total. So we had to impose some limitations on parking to, to create a safer environment for folks. So it was actually at the end of last year that we notified juniors, our juniors for this year, that they would not have parking privileges, and then we would have to restrict that to our seniors. So that's, that's how we got to where we are, is, and why that change took place.
So what do you, what is the school planning to do to make accommodations? Because it's not working now. If, if we were to put out signs, I don't know that anyone would be able to abide by them. Kids are trying to get to school, and where else are they going to park, you know?
So the issue is not getting to school. I think, as you know, we, as a regional school district, are required to provide to and from transportation to school at no cost to students, which we do. We also provide a four o'clock bus for students who want to stay after for additional support with their teachers or clubs and activities. We provide a six o'clock bus and schedule all of our athletic activities so that students can take the six o'clock bus. So the issue is really more related to whether a student... In, in some cases, it's personal preference, and I don't want to overlook that in, in all of this. In other cases, it's that students are trying to go to work. As one of the Select Board members said, we are a vocational school, and we value that. But the reality is, there simply are not enough parking spaces. We have allocated monies next year for significant improvements to the parking lot. But to, to repave, regrade, repave, and reconfigure the parking lot is about $1.5 million. So it's probably not something that we can accomplish in a single school year and maintain any sort of fiscal control over our budget. But long-term, we do need to come up with bigger solutions. I would love to be able to work with the town to look at how we can address that when we are hemmed in on all sides by protective, protected wetlands, that really restrict what we can do to expand parking. We can, we, we know we have a right to improve an existing non-conforming condition, but if we expand parking, we, we may need approval from the town and the Conservation Committee. So I'd be happy to understand what that process looks like. Because at the end of the day, we would like as many students as possible to be able to park and, and, and be safe.
Sure, go ahead. Can you come up to the microphone and just introduce yourself and give us your, your name and address, please?
So John Cuzzi, Ten Pinto Way, Mansfield. My question is, why do the STI children or adults have parking privileges over the, the children? When, when the STI program, which is the Student Adult Education Program, is paid for by the school as well as them? So why does, why do the public students or the juniors not have parking, but they do?
Do you want to answer that?
Yes, absolutely. So because the adult students who attend the TI, which is a public technical institute, is publicly funded by the taxpayers of Easton as well, have no option of taking the regional transportation that we provide to juniors. So they don't have the option of getting on a school bus and coming to the TI. They have to drive so that they can come and access their curriculum.
So the question is, is it a high school, or is it an STI program?
Our school district is comprised of a public high school and a public technical institute.
But they also pay out of their own pocket to go to that public institute, correct?
They do, but I don't see the relevance in that. They, they, they are enrolled in the school. They do not have access to free regional transportation in the way that our high school students do. And so we provide parking spaces for them.
So they go in before the juniors, okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board before we go to the audience?
I just had a question. I, I understood that the, that the adult program was, was an evening program, and now it's a day program? Is that part of why there's a problem with parking?
No, the adult program has been a full-time day program since 1967.
Okay, I stand corrected. Okay, thank you.
No, no questions, just I would reiterate what Jamie said. The safety concerns still exist. They're not addressed by doing this, which I think is very important. I know where you live, and it's a dangerous place for students to be parking crossing the street. But you're correct, it's going to just spill over. There's no solution. I think we need something short-term to address, you know, whether it's incentivizing students not to drive, or whatever it is. I don't know if the SRO can be more in tune with what's happening, so we can get immediate idea of what the spillover effect now, what this change is. But I'm really concerned about students getting injured and...
I'm going to open it up to the public. Did you want to come up and make a comment?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
Again, just please state your name and your address.
Absolutely. I'm Tom Crook. I live at One Morse Road. And I've spoken to the superintendent also probably, I don't know, a couple months ago. But really, I think the board summed it up well. Jamie, you summed it up well from a safety perspective. I think there's a huge perspective. And the way I look at it is, you're right, 40 or 50 kids are crossing that twice a day on 106. And it's my understanding that we really don't control that road, right? Is that correct in Easton? Easton Police can't put a sidewalk or a crosswalk in there, can they?
So it's, it actually is a town roadway, but our crosswalk policy, you wouldn't be able to put a crosswalk in a mid-block like that without a lot of countermeasures. And those countermeasures go for about $60,000.
Okay, so basically, right now, as we know it, the answer is no. Another thing too, if you look at that parking lot on a daily basis, it's, there's empty spots over there. There's probably 40 or 50 empty spots every day. I understand there's a co-op situation also, but I think the first thing is really, it's from a safety perspective. And I guess the question I have for the board is, where does the school's responsibility take over? And I'll give you an example, because I was in the private sector. So if you have a salesperson who leaves their home, and they have an accident on the way to their first call, the way, you know, there's still an employee once they leave that house. I don't know how it works for school. I'm sure once they get on a school bus, it's a responsibility of the school bus in the school district. If someone's driving, that doesn't, no responsibility from the school district takes place, so they hit the front door? Or does it happen on the way to school? But more importantly, it's really around awareness, and that's what we want to do tonight, my wife and I, from the board perspective, is you're aware. We have a problem, and make you aware of it, from a liability standpoint. Because everybody can't say, well, you know, they cross the road, and it's a public road, and they parked. There's a degree of liability. And I think it has to be fixed. I think the parking, I understand what the superintendent is saying, that, you know, you know, it's funding, it's grading, it's redoing the parking lot. Has there ever been an opportunity to really look at that lot and say, how big are the spaces? How many cars are we really talking about? What's the overflow? Is it just, you know, can we rearrange that lot somehow to get parking spaces that are in there now? So.
Okay.
That's my two cents. I appreciate the time, and thank you. But I want to be clear, it's really around this, you know, safety is our number one asset. And I think we, two weeks ago, we had an accident right on the road too. Someone driving in off of 106, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
So one of the things that was asked and that we could do is, we could put no parking signs up for school hours. But I don't think that's going to fix the problem, and I really think it's going to cause more problems. We're not, I don't feel good about going and having our, taking our police resources, that are already limited anyway, to go ticket students who are trying to get to school on time. I think this is just going to cause more problems, and it could make it even more unsafe if they're rushing and trying to get to school. I don't know if you've explored having satellite locations where you could have some of your older stu-, your, your adults park and maybe take a shuttle or something to get there, or some other way. But I feel like the students should have the priority. I know, I understand what you're saying, that you do have free transportation. But we all know, and we all have had or have kids in school, that their schedules change, that they have to come and go a little bit more. The, the buses are inflexible to a lot of students that need to get home right after school to care for their kid, you know, their, their siblings that are getting off the bus, things like that. And I just, I don't think this is going to fix the problem, and I'm very concerned about it. And it is the school's problem. You, you guys have known about this for a while, it seems. And it doesn't seem like there's been any plan to fix the problem. So I don't know where to go from here.
Oh, I, I, again, I want to reemphasize that we have budgeted for next year monies to explore reconfiguring the parking lot. That, that's part of what we're doing, because we do think that we can maximize spaces. It just takes some time, and folks need to allow us to do that in a way that makes sense. We need a traffic study. We need to look at the entire parking lot and reconfigure it to maximize spaces. We need to understand whether or not we can expand the parking situation in any way. So we are not, we agree that even creating a no parking zone at Morse Road is not the long-term solution. I do want to emphasize, however, that is extremely, extremely dangerous for our students to be crossing at Morse Road. And we have reached out to parents, our vice principal has reached out to, to the parents whose students are parking there. Our SRO has reached out. I've sent messages out. I, I, I am very concerned about students crossing that road. But I also am not in a place where I can ask one of our employees to stand out in the middle of, of the road and help students cross the street. To the point that there are occasionally empty parking spots in our parking lot, yes, there are. Because at any given time, a student may be absent, a teacher may have run out for lunch. We have teachers who, because of their, when their prep period lies, they come in an hour later in the day than the students, or they leave an hour earlier. So there are always going to be a few empty spaces. But that's not indicative of a lack of understanding of what our capacity is or trying to work logistically to make it, to make it a safe and efficient parking space. So we are not, we have not given up trying to figure out the issue. We do not want to take part, any more parking spaces from students. I think it's important also to understand that the majority of students parking on Morse Road are juniors. And we still have 50 seniors who were not assigned parking privileges this year because we do not have the capacity. So at, at some point, that we have to have some understanding that the physical limitations of the space are driving some of these issues as opposed to, you know, trying to, to take privileges from students.
I feel like if you were a restaurant, you'd have a certain amount of spots that you had to have as a restaurant. I know it's not apples and apples, apples to apples on that, but I would imagine that when you were planning enrollment and planning the enrollment of your adults, that you would have known that you were short parking spaces. So I just don't understand, the, the answer can't be just tell students, don't park there, because that's not working. So I don't know where we go from here. I'm willing to propose putting up no parking signs, but it's not going to fix the problem. And now that we're aware of it, I'm very uncomfortable that kids are going to get hurt crossing the street. At the very least, I would love to see an adult teacher from your school be there to cross with the students during the peak, the peak times.
So Dottie, I just want to say too, the former Knights of Columbus Hall, which is less than a mile down the street on 106, which is now going to be a church. So I would imagine it's only going to be used on the weekends, and has probably 150 parking spots over there that if you can shuttle students from that parking space as a short-term fix. Because I agree with Dottie. I'm going to say that I think the school needs the spots available. And I know you're saying that, you're, you're working towards that. But it could be a couple of years, right? And so $1.5 million potential expense, along with possibly needing some variances with, or deviation from the current setbacks. So I, I think that, you brought up a good point, Dottie, is, is there a remote spot? And there's an ideal remote spot, I think, just, just down the road that kids could be shuttled from. This, this security concern, and I'll say it, my wife Kristen and I are absolutely dreading that. We've got to make a phone call because the student's been hit. And, and for us to be here as responsible adults and not taking action now and saying, you know what? Parking, no parking signs are not going to work. I agree with you. And we were all students once. And I know that the moment I could get my license, which meant that I could get to work after school, I was driving every day. And nobody was going to stop me. I would have just assumed not gone to school because I had a job that I needed to do, and a lot of these kids are in that position. So I'm with you. I think we need a short-term solution now. And I think that hall parking space may be an option that the school can explore. And then the, the long-term plan's got to follow.
Would that...
I just want to follow up on, on that. That, that is one of the options we would love to explore, is looking at that spot, the Former Knights of Columbus Hall, as a potential shuttle, satellite parking area, either for faculty, for adult students. It, it's very close to the school and may afford us some leeway. So it is, it is something we are, we would actively like to pursue.
Do you have contact information for the new owners?
I do not, actually. I talked to Mr. Dugan the other day to see if he knew who the new owners were.
There's a sign out there.
I've actually made, I've actually made several inquiries trying to get the contact information.
We might have an expert, an expert testimony here.
Yeah, so if anyone in town knows, let me know.
Michael Goodman, 159 Bay Road. I was born and raised here. I also graduated from that school in 1989. And just as a point of clarification, I apologize if I forgot your name, Madam, Madam Superintendent. But again, I was there from '85 to '89, and the TI at that time had probably six to 20 students during the day. So there's this big crowd that since 1960 wasn't there in the eighties. There was a few students, and, and that was it. So the, as the TI grew, obviously, and, and the parking didn't, that right there is, is the rub. As far as increasing the parking there, I spent a few years on conservation in this town, and I certainly don't take the bylaws lightly. But there's no reason that you can't increase parking by over 100 cars on the Maplewood End. Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, that's wetland. It's a, it's a border. It's a, it's a BVWR. There's no reason that we can't issue a, you know, a waiver for that. Somebody needs to go take a look at that, because it is not what you call... You know, when you think of wetland, you think of wetland plants, and you think of wetland systems, water systems, and things like that. There's no reason that can't be expanded. As for the Knights of Columbus building, I'm the former president of that facility. I can give somebody here, I'll send it to Madam Chair, I'll send her the contact info. I can't speak for the... I can't speak for the owner, but I'm sure he'd be amenable, he's a businessman in this community, as well as Stoughton and some of the other surrounding communities, and, you know, he's a good man, and he'd be amenable to doing something, I'm sure, that might help the school out, so I'll forward that contact info over to Madam Chair, and she can disseminate it from there.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So, we'll make that connection for you, and-
Thank you.
And that, that could potentially be something moving forward, but I do want to check back with you in a couple of months, especially because it's going to be so much busier now towards the end of the year, when the weather gets better and everything, and just make sure that we're communicating and on the same page, so that we can resolve this in a way that, you know, we know that you can't just wave a magic wand and make it happen, but we also can't wait a couple of years to solve the problem either, so hopefully we'll be able to find something in the meantime. While that happens, if, if the board wants to consider putting signs at the location saying no parking between 7:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. on weekends, between September 1st and June 1st, as a, as a first step.
To be clear, was it weekdays?
I'm sorry, weekdays.
I just, yeah, I want to hear Chief Boone, because it means you, you brought up the point of having enforced that, and what that's going to look like. Are we really going to tow student cars?
Lynda Katibian, 1 Morse Road. I just have a question, because I don't know if it's with the co-op going on and whatnot, but I've gone over to the school, and I've actually counted 30, 40-plus parking spaces at different times during the day. So, I'm wondering if you did a first come, first serve on the parking, if, if that would just decrease the number of cars that need to park elsewhere for the time being? I know the seniors, you know, I don't know how well that would go over with the seniors, but if, if there are parking, you know, just like if I go to work, first come, first serve, if I don't get there, you know, early enough, I have to park, you know, in a, in a lot further away from where I work.
Thank you.
So, the concern with that is that we have over, over 800 juniors and seniors, and only about 200 available spots. So, without, without a numbered assigned system right now, as, as a short-term solution, we would have hundreds of students showing up with no place to park.
Okay. Jamie, did you want to finish?
Yeah, just that, that, that's my only concern with putting up these no parking signs, is to your point, what's, right, how are we going to enforce that?
Yeah, I mean, we're not in the habit of wanting to monetarily penalize kids trying to get to school, I mean, it would be warnings in education, but, you know, I guess it would still lead back if they're going there, they're still walking across the street, so I don't, I don't know if, you mentioned maybe there's someone from the school that could maybe help get them to cross. I know some of the other schools, we've had crossing guards, I don't know what position the region will be in to have that. We're pretty thin right now to be able to assign someone down there. The SRO does help in the afternoon, but maybe that's an option to try to get someone to help them cross, and that, it's, you know, it's a short window, school starts at a certain time, I think it's really right in the morning, and then right in the afternoon are the other problem times, maybe that's something we can come up with.
I'll say that they don't want an adult out there for the same reasons we don't want the kids crossing, right? They're concerned about the solar glare, they're concerned about, there's no way to indicate that cars need to slow down, especially in that blind spot when you're coming around, so that's, I-
I mean, I suspect if we said no parking there tomorrow, they're all going to know, all the kids are going to know, and other than a few stragglers, maybe they won't park there, they'll probably find the Knights of Columbus, they're going to find another place, and then maybe have their friend who's a senior drive them, I don't know, I mean, that's what I would do. So, we're just going to, we're going to shift the problem to another part of town, whether it's Shaw's Parking Lot, Burger King, or the Knights, but it will stop it at least from going on Morse Road.
But those are also privately owned properties, and having kids traipsing down 106 is not great either, you know?
And that's what we ran into earlier in the year with, like, 7-Eleven and some of those areas down there, the sub shop.
And I mean, honestly, we're here tonight to talk about budget, a budget crisis. We don't have extra police officers to be able to go across kids across the street, it's just, it's just not going to happen, and, you know, there's got to be one person at the school, or a handful of teachers that could take, take turns being out there, but it's, you know, I'm sure it's something that you're concerned about too, but there's got to be, there's got to be something that you can do.
It is, it is, it's just simply not a safe place to cross. I'd be happy to have our, our staff assist if we had marked crossing, if we had flashing lights, if we had something warning people that there was a crossing coming up, but we don't. And to put, I, I would, I don't want our students parking or crossing that street, but I also don't want any of our employees standing in the middle of that road. It is not safe, we have major concerns about that.
Okay.
So, how come there's no school zone on that strip? That would be my question. Like, every other school has a school zone, is it because it's a major route, or is it because, you know, you know, like a 20, 20 mile an hour school zone?
There's no sidewalks to get to that school, and there's no, there's no reason to think that people would park across the street from the school, it's supposed to be all contained on that site.
Okay.
That's my-
All right, it's not eligible, high schools are not eligible for school zones.
Okay.
It's got to be K through 8 is only eligible for school zones, and like, like you said, only if there is a reason to cross, so it's, it's just not eligible for a marked, for a school zone.
Dottie, could I just offer, I don't want to be presumptuous, but what it sounds like is regardless of whatever choice the board makes, on the Morse Road signage, the expectation is that our office, police, Public Works, connect with the superintendent's office and see what options we can identify short of their long-term capital planning in, in the closer term, right, whether that's with Knights of Columbus or other, other resources. Is that fair?
Not really, because it's not the town's problem, it's the school's problem, and I don't want to put more resources on that. Connor, we don't have the staff to commit to that, you know that, and, you know, I know that we always want to be helpful, but we're in a really bad situation with our budget right now, we just don't, we don't have it, and I'm not going to, I mean, we've got staff working round the clock, I'm not willing to ask Sean to do an extra thing. We'll, I've got the number, I think Michael just texted it to me, I'll send that to you, but it's, it's your, it, we'll do what we can, but it's going to be very limited, it's really the school's solution to fix that problem.
Fair enough.
So.
It has to be timely, because I'm really uncomfortable with proving this, without there being at least a next step in the meantime, where we know something will happen, because I don't want that next thing to be a student gets hit by a car. That would be very bad, so, I'm not comfortable with proving this without a timeline, that's what the next step is.
So, Jamie, would your, would you and your neighbors insist upon having no, no parking signs, or can you put that in abeyance until we can come up with a, where the school can come up with a better plan?
I, I'm not insisting, I think what we're insisting is safety first, and that's, and I am glad, I thank you Superintendent for being here tonight, because it, it really is the school's issue, and I agree with Dottie too, this is a school issue, that is our big thing. The no parking signs were an idea that was floated between the school, to the police department, as, as kind of, hey, maybe this is a way we can stop the kids from crossing, but it won't stop them.
Won't stop them.
So, safety is, is the issue, we're not, we're not solving it here tonight, unfortunately, unless the school says, "We're going to pick up the phone tomorrow," which you might, Superintendent, you might have that opportunity to, to speak with the owner of the Knights of Columbus parking lot, and maybe they're amenable to a quick arrangement. There's a gap, I don't know what we do in that safety gap, because it's happening every day, and again, kids, more and more kids are coming online, by the end of the year, you'll have 10 or 15 more students with their license, so it's, the, the problem is growing by, by day. We're, we're fortunate we haven't had an accident yet, it started with maybe eight or nine cars on Morse Road, now we're up to, like you said, 20 or 25, so every day the problem gets a little bit worse.
So, what, maybe what I'd like to do is table this to our next meeting, and we'll connect with you, Holly, and see if you're able to come up with a solution within that time, if you're able to, to talk with somebody about that, and then we'll, we'll, the only other option that we would have is to put signs up, but-
That's not going to-
You know, that's not going to work, or, you know, if the school has to push back, and you have to put sanctions on the students that are parking there with, I don't know, detention, I mean, I hate to say that, because I had kids in school that got detention a lot, you know, I don't want to punish the students, but you're, you know, if you're saying that juniors have to take the bus and they can't drive, then you're going to have to enforce that somehow, if that was your plan.
So, I, I just want to be clear that, that the students parking on Morse Road are not doing anything wrong. They're, they're not violating, like, they can park on a public road, there's nothing in violation of our handbook that says you can't park on a public road, so, which is why we don't impose sanctions on them. Our concern is about their safety, it's not about disciplining students for wanting to drive, or needing to drive, or, you know, not being able to, to find a parking space at the school. It's about making sure that our kids are safe. So, I, I would be loath to impose sanctions on students who are really not doing anything wrong, but what I am hoping to accomplish is just that we find some safety measures to protect them while we are getting to the longer-term solution, which is not a quick solution, and I need the town to understand that. It's going to be very, very difficult for us to figure out how to come up with hundreds of more parking spaces overnight, permanent parking spaces overnight.
Well, what about stopping your adult program for a period of time until you figure that out, because these kids have to go to school, that's the law, right?
And, and those kids have options, and those kids have access to regional transportation that our adult students, our employees do not have access to.
Well, we can argue about the semantics of it, I guess, but, you know, children's labs are in state.
And, and our TI students are students too, and they are residents of Easton and our other eight communities, and they, they also need to be able to access their education.
All right, last comment.
Real quick, the bus system's unreliable, so on a normal pickup day for my students, they get picked up at 6:07 a.m., they have to be there 10 minutes beforehand, so that's 5:57 a.m. The, the bell, the first bell rings at 7:40, that's an hour and 43 minutes between the bus ride and to get to school and, and to be, to get to class, hour and 43 minutes. Now, we don't have, like, the door-to-door pickup, so they have to walk to a certain area. For my children, luckily, before they got their car licenses, the stop was up the street, they only had to walk up the street, but now you're talking inclement weather at 5:50 in the morning. That's another thing to think of. I think the issue is the SDI program, and the next thing is, why do you increase enrollment if you don't have the, the space? I mean, you got to nix it. That's all. Thank you for your time.
All right, well, I think, I don't think we're going to arrive at an answer tonight, I think we've hashed this out, and just kind of repeating the same thing at this point. I, if anybody would like to make a motion now's the time, if you want to make a motion to neighbors, if you want to make a motion to put up signs.
I'd like to make a motion to table this, and with the understanding that the school is going to work hard in this short term, like, right now, to find a satellite place that they can transport these kids safely to the campus.
I'll second that.
So, that's Stebbins and Bajer, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, thank you, Holly, for being here tonight, I appreciate your, your comments, and, and hopefully we can work together for a solution.
Of course we can, and please forward the information to me for contact, okay?
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm so sorry this took a lot longer than we thought, but it was a really important topic, so I appreciate everybody being patient. Next up, we have two public hearings, both with National Grid, so I'm going to have Craig read the public hearing notice.
The Select Board of Easton is licensing authorities pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 166, Section 22, will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Board Room, 136 Elm Street, Eastern Mass, on Monday, February 24th, 2025, at 6:05 p.m. to consider an act upon a petition Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, to install one J.O. pole on Depot Street, beginning at a point approximately 50 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Washington Street, National Grid to install 50-foot Class II pole. Pole will be installed before P-28 Depot Street on the same side of the road as P-28. In accordance with the petition for Plan Number 31056965 dated February 10th, 2025, is shown on file in the Select Board's office.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Richard Fuss, and I'm a distribution design engineer from National Grid. Yeah, so, sorry, I'm not sure how this works, but, yeah, we're requesting to install a couple of poles, to install some reclosers, this is beneficial for reliability, if there's any faults anywhere, you know, it'll automatically trip, if, you know, if it's an animal or a tree limb falls down, it'll automatically come back in place, and we don't have to have a crew come by and, you know, waste their time, but if there is something, it'll stay open, so really, this is just for protection purposes.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that's here for this petition? No? All right, any comments or questions from the board? Yeah? Craig?
So, I move to approve the pole petition for Massachusetts Electric doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, Plan 31056965 at Depot Street and Washington Street.
Second.
That's Bajer and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, the next one.
Okay, this is Bristol Drive, okay. The Select Board of Easton is licensing authorities pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Board Room, 136 Elm Street, Eastern Mass, on Monday, February 24th, 2025, at 6:05 p.m. to consider an act on petition of Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, to install one J.O. pole on Norfolk Avenue, beginning at a point approximately 200 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Bristol Drive. National Grid to install a 50-foot Class H1 pole. Pole will be installed between P-6-50 and P-7 Norfolk Avenue, on the same side of the road as P-6-50 and P-7, in accordance with the petition for Plan Number 31056952 dated February 10th, 2025, is shown on file in the Select Board's office.
Okay. Anything specific about this petition that's not different than what you just told us?
It's not different.
Okay. Any comments, questions from the audience? Anything from the board? Craig?
Move to approve the pole petition for Massachusetts Electric doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England, Plan 31056952 at Norfolk Avenue and Bristol Drive.
Second.
So, that's Bajer and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much for being here tonight, it's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
All right, we have a timed item at 6:10, but I'm going to jump ahead on that, and we're going to do the one-day liquor licenses, if that's okay.
That's fine, I guess, suppose I would ask, is there anyone here for them?
For the liquor licenses?
Yeah, yes. 574 Washington Street.
The, the rest of the crew is in zone, thank you.
Hello, Natasha?
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good. I have a meeting right now, too.
Sure. Oh, you're in a meeting, doing two meetings at the same time?
Yes.
Okay.
I just voted, so.
Process then promoted to panelists, so.
Okay, great. So, let me just get to, hold on one second.
I think this is the third one of the one days, and the other two are stone.
Two, two one days, 16 and 17.
Pull it up here. Okay, so, this is for Two Vegas Beverage Group Edgar Allan Post Speakeasies, our full-color event, 574 Washington Street, May 16th, 2025, 2:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m., with a storm date of May 23rd, and May 17th, 2025, 2:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m., with a storm date of May 24th. So, do you want to tell us a little bit about what you're, what you're doing?
Oh, it's, oh, my name is Natasha Clergey, I'm a counselor in Randolph, Massachusetts, and the owner of Full Color Events in Easton since three years now. It, they are, they have a production, it's very wonderful, they, they do nice plays, and they pick, every year, they go to a different state, and they choose my space to do within Massachusetts, and I'm very, it's going to be nice, guys, as a matter of fact, you are invited.
So, is this open to the public for tickets, or-
Yes, yeah, they're selling tickets, that's why we need, you want to say something?
Yes, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, perfectly.
Excellent, excellent, thank you for having me. As someone who lives in Nashville, Tennessee, it's been interesting to be a fly on the wall at your meeting, but essentially, what we're trying to do is, we do a production called the Edgar Allan Post Speakeasy, and our actors and actresses, you know, give their creative adaptation on the stage, you know, and perform four of Poe's most beloved stories, i.e. The Raven, The Tell-Tale Heart, Black Cat, Masquerade Death, and then intermittently throughout the 90-minute performance, we serve the patrons a themed cocktail as they're seated, and we have, you know, performed our production nationwide for over two years now. And we have, you know, performed our production, uh, nationwide for over two years now. Forgive me, my computer's about to die, so I'm having to move, move spaces. But we, we have, uh, we have done our production in Massachusetts, in Boston, as well as upcoming shows in Lowell, as well as, uh, Worcester. And we, we came across Natasha's, uh, venue there in Easton, and we thought it would be a great place to bring our production and bring, you know, our art, you know, and bring a little, uh, you know, culture to the, the city. And we, we would love to, uh, you know, be approved to do the event.
That's great. Well, where can people get tickets?
So, uh, once we launch tickets, I believe it would be, you know, through Eventbrite, a ticketing platform. Tickets would be marketed, uh, you know, on Facebook or Instagram. Uh, and you would just be rerouted to, uh, you know, the ticketing landing page, and you could find it on our website, edgarallanpobar.com.
Edgar Allan Poe Bar?
We're actually waiting on your decision to, so we can hit the ball warning.
So reach out to me and let me know what the, uh, what the email is so that we can help you promote it.
I have your number. Yes, please. Thank you.
All right. Any comments or questions?
I have some friends who went to one of these, and it was a blast.
Oh, good.
Yes.
Well, when you come here from Tennessee, you're gonna have to make sure you go to, we have great restaurants here, lots of fun things to do. Historical buildings, so, uh, give yourself an extra day to have fun.
Speaking of that, may I please say something aside of, of that? I know you guys, we guys, because I'm part of, you know, celebrating the three hundred years anniversary. And I really want you to, guys, make me part of it. I want to help. And, and we have a big Haitian community in Easton, believe it or not. And I'd like to include our culture through, I'm a caterer and a decorator, so I would love to you, include our culture to your celebration. If you allow us.
Craig is our representative on the three hundred committee, so we'll, we'll get you in touch.
I sent an email, but.
To the, to the three hundred?
Yes.
Okay, I'll check with folks about that. All right, Craig, would you like to make a motion?
I move to approve the two Vegas Beverage Groups Edgar Allan Poe Speakeasy at Full Color Event, five seventy-four Washington Street, May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from two to, two P M. to eleven thirty P M. With a storm date of May twenty-third. And May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, two P M. to eleven thirty P M. With a storm date of May twenty-fourth.
Second.
That's Bajer and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thank you for being here, and, uh, best of luck in your event, and thank you for your service in Randolph.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Women's Basketball Team Banquet in Donahue Hall, Stone Hill College, three twenty Washington Street, March fifth, twenty twenty-five, four P M. to six P M. With a storm date of March sixth. If you'd like to make a motion.
I move to approve the Women's Basketball Team Banquet in Donahue Hall, Stone Hill College, three twenty Washington Street, March five, two thousand twenty-five, from four to six P M. With a storm date of March six.
Second.
Bajer and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, Spelman Gala at the Petite Atrium, Stone Hill College, three twenty Washington Street, March fifteenth, six P M. to ten P M. With a storm date of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So I move to approve a one-day liquor license for Spelman Gala at the Petite Atrium, Stone Hill College, three twenty Washington Street, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, six P M. to ten P M. With a storm date of March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
That's Bajer and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Terrific. All right. Now we are gonna go to the presentation of the Town Administrator's Fiscal Twenty-Six Budget Change Memo, number one. And we have Police Chief Keith Boone and Fire Chief Justin Alexander here as well.
Thank you, Dottie. And, uh, if I could jump in, just for folks who are joining us tonight, see, we have a handful of people on Zoom, which we appreciate. Just, uh, expectation setting here. The chiefs and I will give a presentation, uh, and then questions afterwards would be routed through the Chair of the Board. So, um, uh, chiefs, I'd ask you to come up, uh, with us now. Want to say thanks to the board, thanks to folks here and anyone tuning in. For those, uh, joining us for the first time tonight, my name is Connor Reed. I'm the Town Administrator here in Easton. This coming year will be the ninth annual budget that I have led in my career. It will be the thirteenth that I have worked on in my career. And none of them have been as challenging as this one. So the chiefs are here tonight, uh, to speak in their own words about their operations. But before we get there, I would like to just give a quick overview of the budget process that we have to follow. Since the publication of the preliminary budget in January, residents in Easton have been engaging with difficult questions about what the coming year, uh, presents. Those newer to the process, who might have engaged through promoting a sustainable Easton, might be asking, why are we hearing about cuts to town and school departments if PACE was created by town meeting last year to try to fix some of these challenges? And the answer is that because regardless of where PACE lands with their final recommendations next month, towns and schools have to legally prepare balanced budgets for town meeting that can't assume overrides. Town budgets, uh, are unique. They are not like the federal government. We cannot deficit spend when we have an operating gap. We cannot borrow to cover operating gaps. We have to balance our expenses to our revenues every single year. Budgets also can't assume, uh, a speculative future electoral action. We can't put a budget together, or at least a single budget forward to voters at town meeting in May that is predicated on an override potentially being approved by voters in the future. We can produce choices, uh, for the public. We can have more than one budget on the warrant. That's relatively typical. It's happened here. It happens in communities around the state. But we do have to build a balanced budget where we bring our expenses in line with our revenues without the assumption of an override. And to do that, when we have a budget gap that starts as large as it did this year, which is over six million, we have no choice but to significantly cut, uh, our budgets. The challenges that we're gonna work through in the next three months are informed by where we've come from in the past twenty years. In two thousand and six, voters in Easton approved the last operating override that we've had. That was one year after approving a debt exclusion for the high school and middle school. Voters in Easton have, for decades, been very supportive of debt exclusions, which are unique. Those are revenues that can only fund capital projects. They cannot be used to fund operations. Uh, but operating overrides have been very rare. Unfortunately, two years after that last override, the town's revenue took a big hit when state aid, which is our second-largest source of income, uh, got cut in the recession. It took eight years until twenty sixteen for that state revenue to come back up to two thousand and eight levels. That's forced a really frustrating reality, uh, for our residents, where they see their tax bill go up each year, yet hear, uh, the town claim that it's having revenue challenges. And that's because those increased local taxes have simply just been filling a growing gap of state aid, which used to provide twenty-five cents on every budget dollar, uh, for Easton, now pays just thirteen cents. The town saw an operating override in two thousand and sixteen to address that revenue gap born out of those cuts to state revenue, uh, which voters did not approve. Austere operating budgets have followed for the decades since. In the years following that failed override, we continued to advance work identified by the town's Comprehensive Facilities Program, which was funded by voters in two thousand and thirteen, that ultimately led to debt exclusions for Blancham's and the public facilities. We also took a deep dive into our own operating budgets, because voters funded an operational audit, which found that Easton spends far fewer dollars per resident than neighboring communities and comparable towns and school districts. This was corroborated repeatedly over years of benchmarking, and most recently with PACE's own work spread out over many months and dozens, if not hundreds, of hours of public meetings where they've been reviewing town and school operations in great detail publicly. While, of course, do differ on the merits of any one job or program, that Easton spends fewer dollars per resident on public and school services than most communities in the entire state is a matter of fact. Conservative budget management, coupled with winning tens of millions in grants to support new growth and infrastructure, has allowed Easton to continue providing quality services without an operating override for the past nineteen years. But what's really changed as far as the severity of our budget gap has occurred in the past eighteen months. And what that is, is that we have been experiencing unprecedented growth of health insurance, property insurance, energy and transportation costs since fiscal twenty-four. These are things that people are experiencing in their own personal finances. But on our scale, with the amount of real estate, we have the fleet to ensure, the amount of personnel and retirees, we ensure, it's pushing us to a breaking point. Just before items that are itemized on screen have grown by three point six million dollars in the past two years, which is more than half of the coming year's budget shortfall. The only way to balance a budget with a deficit to size is through substantial cuts or through an override. Addressing this next year, leveraging more savings funds, reorganizing, or getting creative is not gonna do it this time. So then the next question folks often ask is, well, why is this happening in Easton? What, what are we doing here? And while it's cold comfort, it's not actually just happening in Easton. This is happening all over the state. As insurances and other fixed costs are squeezing the expense side, revenue has taken a hit from a growing number of school districts, now two-thirds of them, sliding into, uh, what's called minimum state aid status. And that means that regardless of how much statewide public education spending grows every year, and there's been plenty of articles about that, whether it's going up three, five, ten percent on a statewide level, your district, including Easton's district, is entitled to a minimum funding increase allowed by law, which is thirty dollars per student. For Easton, that equates to roughly one hundred thousand dollars of new state revenue, or two tenths of one percent of the Easton public school budget. The result in Easton, uh, and around the state that we're seeing is growing municipal deficits, and the frequency of operating override requests throughout Massachusetts doubling in the past eighteen months. So bringing it back to our budget as we head into July, where do we stand? We've made progress, and I issued an update to the budget today, uh, that the board has received, that's on our website, uh, that folks can read along with, and we'll publish this presentation as well. We've made some good progress. We've reduced our preliminary deficit, uh, since January from six point three to five point four four million. This includes adjustments to both revenue and expense budgets. The largest portion of deficit reduction has come from five hundred sixty-nine thousand in cuts and adjustments to town services and budgets. These cuts are offset by increases in regional school assessments, an increase to the Reserve Fund from the Finance Committee, and an anticipated deficit in the snow and ice budget, uh, which results in a net decrease in our expenses of three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. Included in those adjustments are two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in cuts to general government, health and community services, and public works. These will eliminate three full-time jobs and shift approximately a, a fourth, an additional, uh, full-time equivalent out of the general fund budget and into fees. School cuts are forthcoming, pending presentation to the school committee leader this spring. And as the remaining five point four million dollar budget gap demonstrates, the size of the deficit here necessitates cuts everywhere. And the largest dollar reductions will have to flow from the largest departmental budgets. Regrettably, this will have to include public safety. Budget reductions to date have not accounted for cuts to public safety. But because they're, these departments are the largest non-school operation, you see them highlighted on screen here at about twelve point six million, they will need to be reduced in order for us to close the remaining five point four million dollar gap. The chiefs and I wanted to share with the community the types of decisions that they're considering, uh, for the coming July in order to do so. And while the final number of positions and the exact dollar amounts in public safety are a moving target, we can say with certainty that both departments' budget requests for next year will be reduced, staffing will decrease in both. And so the chiefs and I felt, uh, it was on balance the best choice, uh, to start this discussion with the board and the public as early as we can, ahead of town meeting in May. And at this point, I would, um, like, turn it over to the chiefs, and I believe Police Chief Boone is up first.
Good evening, everyone, again. Uh, Keith Boone, the police chief. Um, as a town administrator, I just mentioned, um, you know, we've been working on this budget for several months now. One thing that's important to note is going into fiscal year twenty-five, we had a retirement, and we froze that position because we needed to balance the budget last year. Going into this budget cycle, luckily, we have another retirement that was coming in, in this upcoming July. So no one's losing their job. Uh, but we were planning on, uh, staffing that position, and now that position is gone as well. So, um, just out of the gate, we're down two police officers in consecutive years.
How many officers do we, do we have generally?
So we've, we've been staffed for thirty-nine, um, which is lower than our average, which I'll get to, but.
Do you want me to move it to?
Yeah, you can flip the slide.
I got you.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I won't ask any questions.
No, that's perfect.
You probably have all the answers up there.
No, it's, this is a discussion, so, John, you know, if you had any questions come up, we'll, we'll go through them. So we were staffed at thirty-nine when I took over as chief, uh, three years ago. The highest we got to was thirty-nine, and shortly thereafter, um, in the next fiscal year, we did go down. So we've been going backwards, uh, over the last few years. Another update that just came to me Friday morning, we do have an officer right now on military deployment. I was expecting him back next week. Uh, and now I'm not expecting him back for the calendar year. The world's crazy right now. I think everyone knows that. There's things going on in the country, um, around the world. So, uh, I don't even have the timeframe when he'll be back, but I, I'm expecting him to be gone for the calendar year. So that's dropping our number of people coming to work to thirty-six. We're budgeted for thirty-seven, but we're only gonna have thirty-six people coming into work, um, on July. So what does that look like? It's twenty-two percent lower than our comparable comps. So if we were at the average, we should, again, have forty-six police officers, and this is something we talked about during our PACE presentation, um, in several, um, budget updates over the years. Um, where is our money going? We are so heavily, um, relied on staffing for, uh, ninety-four percent, uh, is our, our budget is allocated to people. So the people are coming to work is ninety-four percent of our budget. Um, our expense is extremely lean, and, um, there's nowhere else to cut. You know, we've looked at areas, uh, in expenses. Uh, it's very insignificant. Um, it's all people. So how are we gonna absorb these losses? So things that I know we're going to do, that I've already decided, is, um, following retirement in July, we're gonna drop our detective division from four to three. Uh, for some perspective, uh, the town of Norton, a surrounding town, uh, smaller population, smaller police department, they have five detectives. We should probably have six to seven. We have four right now, and we're gonna go backwards. What does that look like? Uh, lower clearance rates, uh, longer response times for investigations, um, and really just, uh, limiting our capacity to, um, what's required with major crimes, crimes of violence, domestic violence, things like that. Everyone knows, we had a significant critical incident, we had a shooting a month ago. Just to give you a look at what, uh, detectives look like when something like that happens. Everything stopped in the detective unit while they were working on that. And so they worked round the clock for about two and a half weeks, uh, identifying suspects and working with multiple agencies, and thankfully, we identified and made arrests. But while that was happening, uh, everything gets put on hold. And actually, during that, uh, time span, we had two sexual assaults come in, um, that they can't get put on hold. So now we're burning out our detectives to try to finish one task and deal with a shooting, and then go down to Fall River to meet with the C A C. It looks like another, another thing that could come up is, we've had a lot of car breaks, we've had a lot of stolen cars. We were successful in identifying and arresting, um, a multi-state theft ring, um, that we were very proud of. Our detectives did that. Things like that just get put on hold when we have to prioritize, um, crimes of violence. Another thing we're going to do, um, I got creative with a, with a split shift, and we're going to divide a supervisor into a split shift, uh, two day shifts, two four-to-twelve shifts. So while we can't fully staff in both, we can try to give a couple days on both. Uh, we're a young department. We have a great department, but we need supervision, so we're trying to spread that out the best we can. But the challenge that comes with that is, we should have a dedicated court prosecutor that is a supervisor, something we had in twenty fifteen that we still can't get to today. So we're not even back to where we were ten years ago. So our detectives have to not only handle court and all these investigations, um, they're gonna be down to three. So, uh, not fair to them. It's something I, I struggle with, um, with burnout and things like that. So some things that might happen, um, come July, I'm still working on, uh, some ideas I have. But again, uh, there's nowhere to cut. So where the only item, uh, line item I have where I can make some type of, uh, flexibility is our overtime budget. So if I have to cut a large chunk of overtime to balance our budget, that's gonna lead to staffing as much as I can on our patrol division. So we have, uh, calls to service handled. It's not ideal, um, but I think using a split shift and some variation is, is going to get us to where we, we can manage. That's gonna affect our community outreach program, which I'm very passionate about. Right now, we have a community outreach officer dedicated with a town clinician. Um, last year, they had two hundred and fifty-nine follow-ups. That's just home visits post, um, incident, not in real-time calls to service. Um, we've made tremendous strides in the last three years. It's something I've, I've thanked the town, the people here, supported that, hiring a mental health clinician to help the police and fire do these things. We've helped so many families and individuals. Um, it's very sad and disappointing to think that come July, this is going to change. Scheduling-wise, without, without question, uh, it's not gonna look like it does today, but it might have to go all. but it might have to go all, away altogether. We might have to shelve that. Because we, I have to do what I can to keep the shifts balanced. Another thing I'm thinking about is some shift, some shifting in our night, our night shifts. What does that look like? It could look like lowering our minimum staffing, which I don't feel comfortable with, to be honest with you. You know, I have an obligation to provide the best service we can for the town, but I also have an obligation to our officers and their welfare. So I don't want to see them get burnt out. We've toyed with the idea before of a dark station model. I know some towns do it, to be honest with you. It's, I don't know how that would even work to, to stand here as the police chief and tell you, yeah, we're going to close the door at midnight. So if you need anything, call the number on the door, and we'll have an officer respond to the parking lot to help you. You know, I, I know some towns do that out of necessity, but that's embarrassing for me as a chief and as a resident. To think I wouldn't be able to drive to the police station to meet with a police officer 25 hours a day, seven days a week is, again, it's 2025, and I just feel like we're better than that in Easton. We are. So those are some of my concerns in where we're going. We haven't made all the decisions yet on the, on the shift movement, but I, I'm really limited to what I can do. That's the direction we're heading right now.
Thank you, chief. I guess I'll turn it over to Chief Alexander to take us through fire as well.
Thank you. So where are we with fire? Well, the problem with fire is, a little bit of quick background. The last couple of years, we've all, as every department knows, the budget-making process, we submit a level service budget, and we've all been trimmed as part of the budget-making process. So that kind of puts us behind the eight ball to begin with, with a budget that's historically tight to begin with. We finish near zero, or even the last two years, due to some circumstances I'll talk with, below zero, and need assistance to close out our budget. So we're already starting, in this tough budget year coming, behind the eight ball to begin with. We're not the only department that's there. We're also up against the fact that we have, for the last couple of years, had two, IOD is a term you're going to hear a lot tonight, it's injured on duty. You know, the, the non-public safety version, like workman's comp. So the, we have two firefighters who are out long-term, and we still have to pay them, and we still have to cover their overtime for the, because they can't work on the ship. So that's going to be a big factor in the conversation tonight, and why some of what we're discussing sounds extreme. But we still have to pay these firefighters, and we have to take care of them because they got hurt in the line of duty. But it still has a factor on the budget. So when you come into what FY '26 is going to look like, with the cuts that we're talking about, initially, the preliminary numbers, we're going to have some trouble, because we already run a minimum of eight firefighters amongst the three stations. And as we've talked a lot over the last couple of years, when our ambulance is out from our Bay Road station, there's nobody covering the southern part of town, and that's 25% of the day right now. January and February so far this year, run volume is up 10% year-over-year. So we're still crushing record numbers, and it's not getting any slower. When you have the cut of the, of the amounts that we're talking about, the problem that we have is that you can't just take one person, let's say a, a figure, a $70,000 employee, a dollar employee, and just take that position out of the fire service, and then just put that towards the cut amount. Half of that amount has to go back into overtime, because that person's no longer there to cover the overtime, to cover the position if someone takes a vacation day. So we can't just go one-for-one. It doesn't work in the fire service, which is a huge problem for us. So we have one position now that's open due to retirement that happened back in December that was budgeted. So we have that position we can take out for next year. So that's part of it. But you take half of that only, the other half has to go back to overtime. We have a retirement coming in July. Same, same thing. We're going to take that money and put that towards, half towards overtime and half towards the cut. That still doesn't get us to even halfway to where we need to be. That's the problem. So where do we go from here? Well, we're working on a couple of plans internally, and there's still a couple of puzzle pieces that need to happen. But I could tell you with some certainty about some of the stuff that will happen. If July 1 comes and the numbers that we're discussing do occur, we're going to have to do a couple of things. We have 44 firefighters in the budget right now on the line, which is line is the term we use for firefighters who respond to the emergencies. We have two day captains who do fire prevention, and they do, they work with Stephanie and Officer Account over at HCS, doing a great community paramedicine and mobile integrated healthcare program, and it's great. But we're going to have to bring them back into the fold to help cover some of that overtime. So now when we combined the two retirements plus some overtime offset from those fire, from those captains, now we're getting two-thirds of the way there. But where's that last third coming from? Well, we're working a couple of pieces. We don't, I don't have all the answers tonight, but in a couple of versions of the plan, I'll give you our, one version. We would drop a station, we would drop our Bay, Lothar Street Station, when we have to drop to seven. So instead of dropping a minimum of eight, where we hold eight, we would actually go one lower. Much like Chief Boone said, we're going to run something that I'm not comfortable with, but we're going to have to do it. And what does that look like? Well, if we drop that, and we lose that station, you get the old closed fire station sign right out in front, and we lose an ambulance at that point, which also could cover another fire truck when we need it. So that means we're going to go down to one ambulance in those situations. Now, that's not every shift, but it's going to be some shifts. And we're going to have a situation where those would be with one ambulance, which is going to put a delayed response time, because you're not going to have an Easton ambulance available. And it's going to be coming from Stoughton, or West Bridgewater, or Mansfield, or Easton. And I have some experience with the situation in a previous life, and I can tell you, everything I'm telling you is, is in fact true. It will be that way, it will happen, and our mutually partners will see a demand from us that they've never seen in a long time. And it's, so it's not just a burden on Easton, it's a burden on our mutually partners. And that's a real troublesome thing. You should never build a response model around mutually being part of the initial response. It's meant to help, help catch you when you get a surge, but not your everyday. And we're starting to lean towards the everyday, and that's, that's not a good model to go to. But at the same time, we only have so much money, and we have to get creative, and we have to do what we have to do. And so we're going to see brownout of Station 1 across the schools, and that'll be, in that first scenario, you'll see that. If the second scenario happens, we'll have an additional, have to cut an additional two active firefighters. So everything I've talked to up to this point is we can do some through attrition, some through taking people away from their regular jobs and helping them cover overtime, which will delay inspections, will, will hurt our EMS program and HCS, and some of the vulnerable people in Easton that we take care of. But we, the core mission is we have to respond to 911 calls, and that's why we're doing that. But if the, if Plan B occurs, due to some of the way the puzzle pieces land, we would actually lose two active firefighters. Both are transfers of recent time, and that's very painful. We're going to see two great firefighters here who came here, who believed in coming here, and we're going to lose them. And that's not a place I want to put us. But we would, so we would lose them and see, you would still end up seeing maybe slightly less, but, but this is not the better option of Station 1 across from the schools being closed. But in either scenario, it's going to happen. So we're going to lose our, our assistance with HCS, we're going to lose our ability to provide, you know, inspections and safety. But even most, most importantly, is we're going to lose an ambulance and the associated revenue. No, we're not all about making money, we're not profit-driven, but ambulance revenue supports the town and the fire department. And when it's a double-edged sword, when you cut that first ambulance, or the second ambulance, rather, if you will, in this scenario, you not only lose the ability to respond and provide timely care, but the revenue is now going to go to Stoughton, or to West Bridgewater, or to Mansfield. So we hurt ourselves even more on the other side. And you'll see that effect further into FY '26, when the ambulance revenue drops. And that's something that, that hurts the overall budget. So it's, it's really, this is a position that the town hasn't been in with the fire department in a long time. And it's definitely not a place that I want to see us go. But we have to find a way to close the gap. And unfortunately, if we had a one-for-one, it would be a lot easier, because we'd have the two retirements, and that gets us close, but it doesn't work that way. And what we have to know, that we're going to support those two IOD firefighters, those injured firefighters for the entire year of fiscal '26, who will potentially maybe retire, depends on the process works out. We have to cover their salaries. So we're behind the eight ball by two full salaries of firefighters that we're paying that aren't able to contribute by no fault of their own. They got hurt serving the town, I mean, I'm not faulting that. But it doesn't, it still hurts the bottom line, and we have to compensate for that. So when you reduce all that, and then things will be sad outside of the 911 responses. We're going to lose, you know, things like our open house, which we've come to really build up over the last few years, and we love that. And it's a great experience, and our touch of trucks, and our community events, and things that people expect of the fire department, and we're going to lose that. But the, but the, the, the big takeaway for us is that, and as painful as it is, is we're not going to provide the service people are expecting. There's going to be delays in care, and we're going to lose great firefighters in some of these scenarios. And none of those are things I want to sit here and present to you tonight, but they are real, they are fact, given that if July 1 comes and this budget number comes to the fire department, these are facts. This isn't maybes. This is real. And I want to put my chips on the table and say that this is what we have to do as a fire department, with the amount of money that we're going to provide, given the current numbers. Because I know sometimes people are like, well, let's see what happens, or maybe it's not going to happen. Between now and July 1, there's a lot of things going on, but I can speak today, right now, about what we will look like if the number we're talking about tonight for the fire department is what shows up on July 1. That is a fact. And there's just no question. Like I've said before, I've done this before, I've been down this road before, and I, I've had to follow through on this very type of conversation. And I will have to do it again. And I don't want to do it again, and, but we're here. And we're going to do the best we can, and we're going to do our best to protect all of our residents. And that, that's what we do, and we'll take greater risk to do it. And that's not something we should do. But we're always going to answer the call. It's just how the call is answered is going to be different. And I think it will be noticeable this time. There's no hiding it anymore, so. And that's, that's the basis of where we're going.
Thank you, chiefs. Just for the board and folks who are here with us, I'm going to cover the other departments quickly. I'd ask the chiefs to stay up with us, because I assume many questions will be directed your way. Connor, before we do that, can we just make a comment about what we've heard? Because if we look at it, if we flip this and we say, "Look at all the progress that's been made", there's a huge difference. You know, so now we can, we can look at the outreach that both, both of you have, have had to the community, and the way it's changed the relationships with the community. It's, so I, I too hate to see any regression, because the stride, it took a long time to get here, and you guys built up a lot of goodwill with the community. I've never seen the police department be, I think, held in the esteem it's held in. And it's, a lot of thanks to your, both of your leadership, but when you guys put out there that you're truly looking out for the best interest of everybody, whether it's a student, or someone, you know, having a mental illness, a crisis, both departments and Health and Community Services have come together and done an amazing job. And so we can't shut that off and then turn it back on. You have to build that, ramp that back up over years to get this working again. So that is a major concern if we shut this off. And, and it goes for some other departments we'll talk about, but I think it's important we emphasize that. And I hope a lot of people come out Wednesday night to the PACE Open House at, at Blanche Ames School from 6 to 8. Thank you. Thanks, chiefs. So while the chiefs have just covered decisions that we're working together on finalizing in the coming weeks, we have already begun implementing cuts to every other town department. And so I'm going to go through some of those now. Public Works in Easton, like all of our departments, you'll see on all, all of these department screens, you'll see that it's kind of a lot going on, but every single one of these screens shows where our departments spend on a per-resident level compared to our neighbors in yellow, and our comparable communities economically in blue. And you just saw that police and fire are below the average. That's also the case with public works. They do more with less. Our public works department spends 20% fewer dollars per resident than peer communities. And ranking, they rank second to last of our neighbors before we start cutting. They employ highly skilled laborers and tradesmen who care for 794,000 square feet of buildings, 117 miles of roadway, 218 acres of parks and fields, and a 136-vehicle fleet. The budget memo issued today cuts two full-time positions from the public works department and reduces their request by $123,000. That will eliminate the building automation technician and a special equipment operator in the highway division. These cuts will damage Easton's ability to maintain its roads and its public buildings. That will necessarily add to deferred maintenance and therefore, long-term capital costs, which itself will cascade into those capital costs pushing out other non-safety-related funds in the capital expense budget, such as school technology or vehicles. Health and Community Services. Health and Community Services is one of Easton's most efficient departments. It is itself a creation of a consolidation and reorganization of what were formerly four distinct departments to promote shared services at a better cost. This is in part how Health and Community Services delivers their programs for 46% fewer dollars per resident than the average peer community. To reduce HCS's budget requests, we will shift 55,000 of their existing general fund staff into fees and grants. Those fees and grants today subsidize losses at the town pool, which has seen its operating gap grow after the pandemic, regrettably, and allow, the grant part of that allows for additional transportation options for our residents, getting to medical and other important appointments. Redirecting these funds will reduce necessarily transportation options for our community, and it also means that the town cannot afford to open the pool this summer. This is a hard call, but this shift will help preserve the staff at Frothingham, who currently manage more than 140 community programs used by thousands. The Recreation Commission suggested we explore licensing the pool to a qualified organization with aquatics experience. If we can't fund it ourselves, which is a great idea, and that's something we're exploring, but we can't make promises on that front of this time, but we are, we are working on it. General Government. All our departments spend fewer dollars per resident than their peers, but none of them have as large a disparity in spending as general government does. And that's because although we have clearly not been able to resource public safety and public works where we would want them to be, with the limited growth we do have available, it has prioritized education, safety, and public works. General Government spends 52% below the average of our peers. We spend near the bottom of all towns in the entire state of Massachusetts. And I do not say that as a point of pride. Nonetheless, every department must contribute to closing the deficit. And so general government will cut 1.35 full-time equivalent positions from our budget. That will eliminate a full-time position, which will result in reduced customer service hours for cash collections and bill payment. We are going to reorient the focus of planning, who currently are winning $3.40 in state and federal grants for every $1 Easton funds them. We're going to move them away from strategic and vision-based plans to focusing on permitting. We canceled earlier this year the planned hiring of a civil and stormwater engineer between public works and planning, who would have assisted with expediting permitting for our residents and our businesses to get them through that process as timely as we can. And that's so we could redirect the fees and other revenues that are outside of the general fund towards existing staff. So we will, we will go without that improvement. We'll also need to scale back other administration and finance functions, like the GFOA budget book, likely end the Citizens Academy after this current class. Reductions to general government will jeopardize our ability to exercise the appropriate oversight and internal controls over our financial, legal, planning, risk management, and operations for the entire town government. But as I stated before, and as I'm sure the severity with the chiefs has been made clear, every cost center is going to have to be reduced. The Easton schools have a kind of concurrent process, but under Ed reform, the school committee is responsible for the hearing process there. That's not new, that's always the case. The Easton schools are continuing their efforts to reduce their budget request. Those reductions will ultimately go to the school committee later this spring and will be incorporated into the overall budget. Due to the relative size of the public schools within the total budget, the cuts will be substantial. And they can include cuts to staffing, which will quickly to increase class sizes, reduce programming and enrichment offerings for our students, and non-staff items, including transportation, technology, and more. Other non-department budgets have been adjusted since January and reduced the deficit just shy of 140,000. They're itemized up here on screen. There is some good news as far as debt service being reduced from our initial projection, and some not-so-good news in the form of a snow and ice deficit that we are now forecasting, and increased regional school costs. The net overall is a positive reduction, though, which is about 140,000 of progress. On the revenue side, we've updated our forecast by about 526,000. Uh, for those following at home, uh, or those who maybe have done this a few times, sometimes folks uh, like to. To the chief's perspective, they see the budget process start early. We always have a budget gap when we start and then we always fix it, right? And so sometimes people think that that's us finding money. And that's not what that is. Uh, and there's a few important pieces baked in there. First of all, when we usually start the budget process, the gap is closer to one to two million in a typical year. This year it was over six, so the scale is just not comparable. But setting that aside, when we upgrade a revenue forecast uh, by 500,000, which is equivalent to less than half a percent of our hundred million dollar budget. That's not because we're finding money, that's because as time is passing, we are getting newer uh, monthly and quarterly year-to-date actual collections on local receipts. We're getting new information from the state as far as what their budget proposal, which impacts our budget is. And so we uh, take care to be conservative and not overestimate those revenues, uh, because we don't. As hard as this budget process is, uh, and as perhaps easy as it would make uh, a lot of our lives right now, we said, well, you know what? I'm feeling like local receipts is going to go up five million, so we're all done here. Uh, we can't do that. So we have to follow uh, the actual collections through the year and we refine the uh, outlook for the coming July based on actual collections. But to be clear, as we do refine revenue forecasting, it, we're not going to refine our way up by five and a half million. Which is roughly the size of a remaining problem. So where do we go from here? We've made progress, but 5.4 million is still substantial. We're still a long way from home. The coming three months are going to be very difficult. We have some immediate uh, next steps coming this March. A really huge one is that the group insurance commission, which provides insurance for our active and retirees. Uh, our active employees and retirees, they will set their rates for fiscal 26 at the end of this week. This plus any other insurance adjustments that we make are going to be reflected in the next budget update in March. We also will uh, learn what fiscal 26 rates for property casualty and liability insurances are from our existing and competitive carriers. Collective bargaining, uh, all seven town unions uh, contracts expire at the end of June. We've been having good conversations with all of our union leaders and appreciate their collaboration as we try to find a way forward here under some pretty uncertain times. However, uh, and this is not something I have not uh, let these union leaders know. If we don't have agreements by March, we are going to pull the COLA that we have budgeted out of the budget. Because I, it is my opinion that when we're making choices as difficult as what the chiefs are talking about, we should not be carrying a prospective uh, contractual outcome. At the cost of laying off active employees. So we're trying to wrap those things up and I can't say enough how much I appreciate our unions and our employees for working with us on that. Fees, boards and departments are in the process of raising fees. The Board of Health has already raised fees. We're looking at building, planning and concom are uh, coming up. Select Board has new licenses. We uh, have not raised many fees for many years in Easton. We do not try to add an additional burden on top of taxation to folks, but when we have a revenue gap this severe. And when we're having to make budget choices as difficult, then this is the appropriate thing to do. Finally, uh, in March, we'll make a proposal for stabilization fund use. We still don't have any of that carried in the budget because again, I don't think it would be appropriate this early uh, to lay those funds out. Because that could misconstrue to the public the size and severity of a problem. I, I want to stress, and I think I did in the beginning, and if I didn't, I apologize to everyone listening. That all the cuts that we've discussed tonight, that the chiefs have discussed tonight um, are painful. You can see it in the chiefs, I hope it seems sincere for me. These are, none of us get up and come to work to want to do this. We care about this community, we care about our employees, we care about our first responders. But we have a legal obligation to balance the budget. And so the cuts we're discussing are based on what we expect to be available from revenue. Against the, the massive increase in healthcare and other costs we have to pay. That are not optional for us to, to not pay, so we could fund these departments. And so this is a reflection of the, the accounting that says we must do. It is not a reflection of our belief in the value of these departments. And while the cuts that we need to plan are upsetting, they shouldn't be a surprise. We have narrowed our operating margins as the chief touched on, more than 90% of his budget expenses have been hollowed out over years. For nearly 20 years now, especially following the failed override in 2016 and warned that this day would eventually arrive. Uh, but there is, I think, good news and I don't want to end it on that. Budget years like this are extremely upsetting. They're distressing for the people who work here, they're upsetting for the community. And the choices that people have to consider are difficult. There's no easy out. Whether Pace recommends an override and the community considers that or not, that's not an easy answer either. That, you know, any discussion of an override is a discussion of folks who are already struggling to make ends meet. Falling further behind or a young family that can never start out here at all, or a business getting pushed behind. A senior um, not able to make ends meet. There's no easy answer. But I still uh, want to close this with a word of hope, which is that one way or another, come July, Easton will have a new normal, will have a new baseline. And while that prospect brings with it the fear of uncertainty, the thing we should take solace in is the certainty that we will have a choice. We've been really heartened by the work of Pace, where residents have spent dozens, if not hundreds of hours now, working towards solutions with us. And to see how many of our neighbors are getting engaged. None of us up here, not me, not the board, not the chiefs, not the superintendent, can unilaterally adopt budgets for 25,000 people. Uh, so wherever we do land come July will ultimately reflect the choice of this community. I've asked the board on the agenda tonight to confirm that they intend to offer voters a choice of a budget, this town meeting balanced through cuts. Or a budget that sustains services with an override pending Pace's final recommendation uh, this coming March. That's not the same as actually calling an election for anyone following along. Uh, that would be premature because we don't have a budget finalized, nor is it a board imposing an override. That was one of the questions that came up at Pace. From a member of the public. The, the board has a lot of legal authority and responsibility, but the select board can't simply take a vote and say, we're raising taxes. That's not how it works in the state. I don't think many people would like if it worked that way in the state. I think because people did not like how it worked, that's how Prop two and a half came into existence. But the, the board can uh, give voters a choice. And so as we work towards town meeting, I hope that people stay engaged. I hope people get educated. We have uh, tried to do better, making resources available. All those uh, web resources are right on screen if you go to easton MA.us slash FY26budget. You, if you're not, I really, really hope you sign up for the Town Crier. We send weekly updates through there. Perhaps some of the folks joining us on Zoom uh, joined this meeting because we specifically flagged it there. We want folks to get engaged and get educated and because you will need to take part in some incredibly important and difficult choices for your own community. And we hope to see uh, many of you uh, two nights from now at the open house that Pace is hosting at Blanche Ames uh, from six to eight. So that's what I have prepared. I appreciate the board uh, giving myself and the chiefs your time and uh, the three of us can take your questions.
All right, so what we're going to do is we're going to have the, open it up for the board to have questions. Then we'll open it up to the people in the room and then um, do we have a lot of questions on Zoom or? We don't have any questions on Zoom, so that makes it easier. All right, Jamie.
You know, I, I'm going to make this pretty personal. Before I got involved with the town, I was an oblivious member of the town who um, enjoyed the services and moved here with. You know, prior to starting a family and uh, you know, that's 16 years ago. So it started with the finance committee and you start to get that peek behind the curtain and you start to realize all the hard work that goes on. And I, I'll say that, you know, watching so early in Connor's tenure is when I came on board. And to see his growth and the growth of all the department heads and how fortunate we are in this town to have such talented people working for us. And doing so much with so little. This is stuff I didn't think about or even, you know, I lived that oblivious and I, and I'm now preaching and uh, Tom Bressard's here. And challenged us to bring at least 10 people to the last pace committee meeting. And I'll say, I hope we all bring 20 or 30 to this next one. But it's people like Tom that inspired me to get involved too, because Tom uh, was a newly elected select board member. And I remember going and listening to him and Chuck King uh, at, you know, one of their campaign uh, stops. And it, it was finally, you know, that aha moment when you start to realize what it takes to run a town, a community. This is democracy, right? This is, this is where it works. This is what's difficult. It's like watching the sausage be made and nobody wants to see that, but that's important. Civil discourse is important and it's super important that we uh, engage in, like the pace committee has been doing, engaging the community with this 19-member. Uh, committee uh, digging into the weeds and coming out and saying, man, we've been there. We know what's in there. There's no surprises, there's, there's nobody doing anything uh, underhanded here. Because unfortunately, that's the rap that government gets is that. Wha- what do you mean? Our budget's 100 million, you guys can't run a town with a hundred million dollars? And I think that this team and Connor points out real quickly. A lot of the costs that continue to go up in all of our personal lives continue to go up for uh, this community as well. Whether it's our insurance costs, uh, our healthcare costs, um, all these costs that continue to go up. We need, we've not been able to stay with or keep up with and, and that's what hurts, right? That's what hurts, like we talked about, the folks that are going to feel it the most. Uh, when we either make these cuts. Or we uh, go for a, an override that allows the money to be there uh, to, to pay for. The services that we all depend on and we all realize now are quite lean when compared to our comparable community. So um, I'm just, I feel very fortunate that I've had the ability at, at, you know, should have happened 15, 20 years prior, but at least. Uh, having a young family and being able to get out there and speak to other young families and say, hey, it's important that we come out, listen, learn. Uh, and observe as much as we can because I was an oblivious member for many years.
Jamie.
It's interesting you share that perspective because I came to this, my, my dedication to volunteering through finance committee and select board came from a place of being a planning student. And coming in with a totally different perspective of like, I'm going to come in and change the world. You guys clearly haven't thought about grants and haven't thought about these reciprocal programs and all of these things. And everything I brought up, a lot of these ideas, this town was doing. So, you know, these things have been thought of and coming in with that more academic perspective into reality was a big wake-up call. And I went through the same process you did, but from a totally different angle, same conclusion, same reality. And um, it's been, you know, a wild journey through the past seven years of going through the ups and downs of this experience as part of this community. I don't think anybody takes any of what we're experiencing lately. It's a very um, heavy feeling. I, you know, I have two of my own children. We have a senior who doesn't be my father-in-law. I have two parents in Stoughton who are facing these same issues in their community. But they're, for, working on moving into retirement, what that uncertain future feels like. On top of the fact that all kinds of things are in a state of uncertainty right now. You know, it's, it's a very difficult time. So I just wanted to kind of build on what you said with the different perspective. I had some questions as you were both speaking and some points I wanted to make. As you're both talking about things that have to be cut, things like the community policing, which we know has helped through 259 calls for outreach. The paramedicine program and what that's brought to the community. I don't look at that and see a cut. I see a, a really big hit on investment. And we're seeing this at all levels in government right now. Like, yes, things can be trimmed and can be tightened up, but we've been doing that in Easton for a very long time. So when I think of 259 calls, what happens to those people? How many of those now turn into calls that are going to be putting more demand on the police and on the fire and on other people in town? We don't have detectives to deal with those problems anymore like the, the rate we previously had. So I just see this loss of an investment, loss of talent in this space and it's, it's jarring. I, you know, we've already done so much. You have these great models for the mechanic um, that has brought valuable expertise and resources to town. And I'm really creative thinking about opportunities for using that. The visibility, it's a hu- it can be a huge loss. And those things also pay dividends when it comes to um, making the community feel safer and mitigating future crime. I, you know, one thing that came to mind uh, as you were speaking, talking about mutual aid. How does that look when other communities are going through the same kind of constraints? And the expectation is this is reciprocal, so we're going to be calling on our neighbors, but they're going to be calling on us too. And I know you've thought about this, but that really scares like the life out of me because that's a big demand.
So, you know, I'm not involved in every community's budget-making process, but in speaking with my counterparts, you know, I, I think, given our contiguous towns and city. We're probably in the worst position right now.
Yeah.
And I don't see a large jump from any of those communities. You know, in fact, I think some have actually added more ambulance coverage and ladder truck coverage nearby and um, so while they may be treading water in some communities, they're not going to go backwards like we are. I think we're going to become the draw. And it does, that does, I've seen it over the years, many years doing this, that, you know, a community will become the draw, if you will. And it takes them a little time and some fix it and then some don't. And that becomes a real big problem because then town leaders start getting involved and they say, hey, what's going on? Like, you can't keep doing this to us and it can become very contentious. But more often eventually um, communities step up and they eventually fix the problems. Sometimes it's not instant, but they do. And then another community falls into that and they become that draw community with their draw and mutual aid. It's our turn. Um, this, you know, to the point about tightening the belt, like there's no more holes in the belt. We, we, we can't get any tighter. And um, now it's going to affect not just us, but our partners. And um, you know, you never like go into a, a, one of the meetings where we, we get together monthly as chiefs to try to solve these problems and be that department. But, you know, I have confidence in, in the short term, you know, and really forever, but it does put a real strain that our, our partners will be there. But it doesn't come with the same service. You know, instead of a five minutes to get an ambulance, it might be 10, 15, depending on where you are in town. And that matters, you know, and that matters. And then we're also going to be tied up chasing calls, um, not being available for fire calls. Because we're stuck sitting at a medical, waiting for an ambulance to get there. We can't leave. So there's, there's a whole layers of those onions that just keep pouring out. And, and it's very unfortunate.
Yeah, that really hits me hard. But first of all, I'm slightly glad to hear that you, your perspective isn't as doom and gloom as I feel. Because I lived through having a relative who was end of life in the community. And we relied heavily on the fire department who was fantastic through that process and some of the worst days of our lives right up to that end where she passed. I can't imagine families going through what we went through and having those horrifying couple minutes be longer. Because it feels like a lifetime. And, you know, as a member of the sandwich generation, like a lot of my peers are going through this right now. And challenging families and elders with us. It's not, it's a terrifying prospect and it really breaks my heart to think of people going through that process, that situation.
An interesting perspective you, you touched on there, you know, what, you know, somebody who's going to be affected by this is actually our, our dispatchers. Because they're going to have these people on the phone longer, uh, you know, crying for help, waiting, where are we? You know, and five minutes is a long time when somebody of your family who needs desperate help. And then if it's double that to 10, that's, that's a long time. And um, you know, I, it, it's a tough job and it's just another layer of that onion of people that are impacted by all this. But um, you know, I try to have a positive effect when I talk, but this is not good. This is not good at all. This is not good for anybody. It's not good for the community to be safe. It's not good for our firefighters to be safe. But in the end, we can't print money. That's the problem.
I, the other point I had on here ties to that point, which is when people are operating in a space of being burned out. And when you have situations where folks are getting injured on the job, that only compounds and becomes more of a problem. So, you know, we may be throwing more money to solve problems that come from this. So I just, you know, throwing that out there is another thought.
It hurts our reputation. You know, when you lay off transfer firefighters who come to us from another fire department, you lay them off not long after. That becomes a high recruiting problem when we do recover. People are skeptical, they don't want to come here. That's, that's, there's other pieces to that.
Is there any opportunity in looking at more like shared personnel models with other towns on some of these things that are getting cut? Or we already kind of turned over re-stone on that?
Yeah, we, we try. I mean, that, that's a whole um, Massachusetts political discussion, probably not for this meeting, but um, you know, regionalization can work.
Yes.
If you put the right circumstances and funds behind it, like the 911 system had the, the funding to do that. And that was the impetus to do it. That doesn't really exist for the fire service and probably for the police departments either. You know, if all of a sudden you started throwing millions of dollars to communities to combine fire departments, well, maybe people would pay attention. But right now, um, i- i- it's a very tough thing to do. But we do look at things we can do and can share.
Yeah, and I know it's a hard part of the country for that because other parts of the country, they've taken that model and built it out.
The county model is very prevalent in other parts of the country. Unfortunately, New England is not that way. Yes, 351 towns.
Really good point though, and that's something that's come up a lot with Pace is, you know, the more time you spend working in these municipal budgets, the more you, I, in my opinion. You kind of can't reach any other conclusion, but the way that this is structured is completely unsustainable long-term. It's just not realistic to have 351 cities and towns all have these small, basically boutique. Town halls and fire departments and police departments. And that's in a idiosyncrasy of how old our state is and we have this legacy of town meeting and a strong local control, which is great in a lot of ways, right? You can participate in town meeting, you can go and learn about your budget firsthand. You could challenge the executive branch, you know, and call them to the mat uh, as a voter. In a way that if you have a more distant government, you may not be able to. But we don't have those economies of scale to provide services that county-level governments have. And so we're, we're just kind of always behind the eight ball. So we do regionalize where we can. eight ball. So we do regionalize where we can. That's a question that comes up a lot with voters, particularly folks who, you know, work in business or, you know, economics are like, oh yeah, it's pretty obvious. Just consolidate services with the neighboring towns. Like, that's fine. We have to also comply with the law. And we also have to have a, a legal structure and a financial pathway there. And what the chief is referring to is we have regionalized 911 dispatch with four communities, which is SEMREC of Easton, Foxborough, Norton and Mansfield. And that's been a huge success. But the state put millions of dollars into that process to help build high rock, to incentivize communities to do that. Because that's a, quite a big process. It involved us dissolving an entire local department. And it's been worth it. It's, it's an amazing improvement. And we're still today spending fewer dollars operationally than we were in 2019 for better services, which is something you don't get to say often. And so for anyone who's tuning in for a first time or looking at this and, you know, Jen, to your point saying, well, there must be another way. Is there a way to be more economically efficient? There are sometimes. And we, we certainly, none of us know everything. We always can do better and get better. And we certainly are up against it and, and, you know, necessity forces innovation. But those areas where we could achieve huge savings, we did some of those already, like 911 dispatch. We do regionally share a mechanic and charge other communities. That's always an area that we go to for sure.
That's all my comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't mean to be dramatic, but I think that we're heading for a fiscal cliff. And I think if you refer back to two comments that Connor made in a budget document back in, as, after we adopted the budget in June of 2020, he said that after the conclusion of town meeting, the adoption of a fiscal year 2021 budget, community will need to confront the town's persistent structural revenue deficit to consider the long-term implication of repeatedly underfunding services across all departments. And then again in 2024, unless the current cost pressures trends in this area of healthcare, school transportation, utilities and other fixed costs significantly entail, it is probable that cuts to town and school services may be required in fiscal '26. Those two things are absolutely true. And I first want to compliment the PACE committee and Tom and Nancy for the work they've done over the last month, number of months. And to you both in, in your roles and, and David in his, his role, that it's unacceptable to me that we would go into fiscal '26 with, with the cuts that you guys are talking about. It's unacceptable for the safety of the community, for the kids in our school programs and for our employees. And I, and I think that it is, to Connor's credit, the way he presents the information, the way you've presented the information, if people are paying attention, it's real. It's not some fantasy. It's not something we can cut here, we can cut there because we, we overspent or we over, it's not true. It's not true. And I think the PACE committee has been in the forefront of providing that information to the general public. And I, as, as my colleague Jamie Stevan said, we hope that we can bring 10 or 15 or 20 people to Wednesday's meeting of the PACE committee. So people can understand the real issues that we're facing here and what the dramatic impact will be if we have to go into fiscal '26 with those budget cuts that you're talking about. And it's, it's, for, for me, I've been in this town since 1980. I've seen it grow from 12,000 or 15,000 to 25,000, 26,000 people. And, and I understand the demands that are made upon our town government by those 26,000 people. And as my colleague Jen Stacy talked about, I, I was a big supporter when you guys came up with the idea of the community outreach, the mental health person. I mean, just some incredible things that you guys do and the creativity that you show, the creati, the amount of work that DPW does with the amount of staff they have is extraordinary, extraordinary. And I just think that it's time for folks to, to pay attention, to say, this is real. And how are we going to, how are we going to change how our perspective, our potentials if we don't do something right now? And, and I, and I think it's, it's incumbent upon all of us to articulate that. I spend a lot of time, every time I get a chance to say to somebody, have you, have you, have you watched the PACE committee? Have you read the material? Have you looked at the town crier? Because it's, it's critical for the folks to, to come to a realization that we really need to make some changes going forward. And it's not, we're not blowing smoke. This is real. And, and I hope that we see a huge turnout at the PACE meeting on, on Wednesday. And I, I know that Tom and Nancy will do a hell of a job presenting, as will members of the committee. And, and I think there, there probably were members of the committee who went into the meetings thinking that maybe there was something that we were not doing well. And I think all of them, from my perspective, have now realized that this is real. And, and I love this community. I raised my kids in this community, my grandkids, and, and I want to see it continue to strive and thrive. And I've taken enough of your time.
So a couple of the things that I was thinking about, you know, we, people don't really recognize something until it's like a crisis situation when it comes up. And then it's like, wait, what, how did we get here? Every year that I've been on the board, we've done remarkable work, cut, making cuts, adjustments, improvements, you know, even back when I started putting LED light bulbs in, like always trying to find cost-saving measures. But when you do it efficiently like that and people don't feel an impact because you're doing a good job, nobody knows all this stuff. It like, it's like, oh, have you ever thought about like evaluating your department to make cuts? Like, and, and I'm not being fresh when I say that. That's an, like, that's what people think. That's what I would think. That's when I ran for, you know, you were talking about what you thought beforehand. I was thinking the same thing. Like, what are they doing with all the money? And then, you know, even the people that are in the citizens academy, the people that are in PACE, once they start to learn what really is going on here, they're shocked that we're even able to do it with, with the limited means that we have. Something I'm very concerned about is we, one of the cuts that we made last year was training. And that is so dangerous. It's dangerous for the community. It's dangerous for our staff. And, and now we're definitely not bringing training back again. So there's other cuts we've made leading up to here that, that we're not really taking up a lot of time speaking about, but they're not coming back the next year. These aren't like temporary cuts. Once we lose these, they don't come back. And I, I'm really scared about that. You know, I'm scared for myself, my family, my community and for the people that work here. The other thing is that I've noticed is that when there's emergencies, there's clusters of them. So it's not like there's a car accident there and a couple hours later, there's a medical emergency here. They all happen at the same time. And with, you know, limited resources to do that, I think, I just can't even imagine how that's going to happen. And I'm very worried about that. I'm worried about the, the services that we're able to deliver, but I'm also worried about what that does to the psyche of people whose job it is to help people, that we don't give them the tools to do their job. They can't do a good job. And that's just awful. And I'm very worried about that. The other thing that I had was if we're down to the, to below where we want to be with staffing and somebody has maternity leave or paternity leave or an injured on duty or has to take family leave to care for, we don't have the, the margins to be able to do that. And if it's three people, we're in big trouble. So I just want people to think about that. It's not these, these positions are not easy to be replaced. And then if we have to force overtime to do that, we're just, it's just not healthy. I, I do not want our first responders to be suffering from poor, poor environmental health or mental health stress. So, you know, I hope people are thinking about that as well. And also, you know, from a, a business and a business risk, you know, our credit rating, this impacts a lot of other things that we're doing. And, and, you know, I know we talk about that a lot, but this is, I think that people really need to hear it again. Just, just the, it will take, it will be so much harder to build back after this. So I hope that people are thinking of that. Now, at the same time I say that, I'm also very concerned about, there's a lot of people in the town that are not going to be able to, to be able to sustain an increase. And we've worked super hard to put all kinds of services in place to be able to help people that are income-eligible with that. I feel like we should probably start promoting that again so that people are aware. But we don't take this lightly. We're losing sleep over this, I know, as a board. And certainly you guys as, as leaders in the departments and Connor and staff. I don't want people to, to look at this and think, you know, we haven't tried everything possible. And putting together the PACE committee, meeting every other week since Labor Day, five-hour meetings, like these, and everybody goes to the meeting and everybody's putting in 100%. The schools are, are putting in their time. The unions are putting in their time. Nobody's come up with, with the amazing solution that nobody's thought of. So I hope people realize that we really have put a lot into this. We, we take it very seriously. And we're going to present, you know, we're going to present a balanced budget one way or the other. But I hope that people aren't coming to town meeting saying, you know, this is the first time they ever heard of this. Do we have any questions?
We do have one.
Okay.
Are there any capital projects that were approved or in the pipeline that can be delayed?
So the capital budget is different from the operating budget, but I'll, I'll let you give the details on that, Connor.
Sure, thanks, Dottie. It's a fair question. It's one that's coming up quite a bit right now. Obviously, folks, when we're in such a tough operating position, start looking for where are there any opportunities at all to reduce the pressure on our departments? And our capital budget is funded through a mixture of, the typical capital budget's funded through a mixture of two things. One is available free cash, which is either unspent operating funds from a closeout of the year before or revenue that you collect in excess of your estimates. The other form is through borrowing. And so I'll get to exempt debt after because that's really important. But when you look at the town's borrowing cost, right, so we carry, it's called debt service in the budget. It's a fixed cost. That's something we work very closely with the finance department, with the capital planning committee, who's a group of citizens who have to administer the bylaw for the capital plan that prioritizes capital requests of all of our departments based on safety. So they're going to prioritize replacing an ambulance. So sooner than they would prioritize a copier at town hall. In an ideal situation, we would have more free cash on hand to pay for those. So you're not incurring long-term costs in the operating budget with debt. But our non-exempt debt, so that's debt, that's not things like Blanch Ames, it's not things like Alver Ames, it's not things like the Police Fire Public Works. That, that has an impact on your operating position, right? Because that's just a recurring cost that's carried in your normal operating budget. Our exempt debt burden is actually quite low. We, we spend less than 3% of our operating budget on non-exempt debt. So that means that principal and interest payments on normal capital projects is less than 3% of our $100 million budget. It's actually arguably too low. Ratings agencies do want to see you appropriately investing. But because we've had so much pressure in our operating budget for so long, that's been one of the things that's weighed heavily on our appetite for borrowing. So we've cut back on some big things over time, like we used to do half million dollar borrows annually to supplement road funds because those are chronically underfunded by the state. And we've trimmed those things back gradually over time. As far as immediate projects, the, and Wendy, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the anticipated, when we go to town meeting and do a borrowing, we have to forecast our multi-year debt service impact estimates. And we have baked that into, I believe, the current debt line. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And so not that it's, it's not nothing, everything adds up, but the exempt, the, the non-exempt debt, so that's your normal borrowing in the operating budget, is projected to be at about 2.9 million going into next year. That's an increase of about 300,000 since four years ago. So that's less than 3% a year. So we've already been working pretty hard to keep that budget pretty tight. So it's a very long way of saying, we'll definitely take another look, but very likely not. Larger projects that I think folks are probably thinking of when they ask that question, things like Blanch Ames or Police Fire Public Works, those are done through a debt exclusion. And those borrowing costs are much more substantial. They're multiple millions of dollars. But those are not impacting the operating position because the way a debt exclusion works is that voters approve a dollar-for-dollar match. So if you end up with a $5 million annual bond payment for Blanch Ames, the tax levy increases by 5 million to pay for that. And when Blanch Ames is paid off, then that tax increase goes away as well. So it seems counterintuitive. One of the questions we've been getting a lot is how can we possibly have money for all these buildings? We don't have money to employ the people to work in them. It's because they come out of different revenue streams that are limited by state law. We can't redirect those capital funds. So let's say we delayed one of those projects. All we would do is increase its cost. We have to do them. That's why we put them before the community and why folks voted. If you delay that, it, it doesn't reroute a dollar to the operating budget. It doesn't contribute to fixing the deficit. And arguably, it just continues to exacerbate it because our public works department that we've established is already under-resourced, is throwing good money after bad, trying to stretch the last few years of life out of a bunch of facilities that were built in the 19th and early 20th century. So we'll take a look at the, the non-exempt projects, but that is a, quite a small bit of our budget that's increased very modestly over time. But we'll, we'll definitely take a look.
Any questions from anyone in the audience? All right.
No, I don't have a question. I just have a comment that I, I hope you get a lot of people Wednesday night. I mean, honestly, because I came early tonight to get a parking space and a seat. And I think there was really only one other person here that wasn't here representing a department. So I hope, I hope people understand, you know, how dire this is. And my hat's off to the fire department because I went through that with a family member and people were unbelievable.
Tom, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No.
Sorry to put you on the spot. Now I'm calling on people like a teacher.
No, that's okay. Tom Broussard, 28 Armor Lane, PACE committee chair. I would just echo a lot of what you said, Dottie. I was going to stand up if you didn't. And I appreciate that you mentioned it, that we really find ourselves as a community in a difficult spot because there are plenty of people that need to use our food pantry. There are plenty of people that are on fixed income. And so at the same point, I speak with thorough conviction that we know that our departments, our schools operate with less and that they get a tremendous amount done as a result. The numbers show it. I think the anecdotal stories show it. The human aspect that we're able to share shows it. And I've had my own experiences with both the fire department and the police department to personally support what most of you have already said. I would just ask that everybody be thoughtful because there's a human face on both sides of this coin. There are employees of ours, town employees that give so much. There are people in our community that giving an extra $100 is a lot. So there, if this was an easy problem to solve, I think we would all do it. But I know, I think we all know what we would like to see done. And I just ask the select board to continue to support those people that might be disadvantaged and impacted, I guess, an outsized impact by an override, if that's what comes to pass. And just keep them in mind because we know that there's a real strong human element to what we're talking about. And we really do appreciate the community engagement. It's been great. And we hope everybody continues to show up, learn, and, you know, hopefully we can get to the right place. Come in. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. I know this is really hard for you, both personally and professionally to come in and, and talk about this. And I can feel, I can feel the energy of, you know, it's usually we have so many, so many things to be happy about. And it's usually a very exciting time when you guys come. So this is, this is really, it's tough. And I think that this is where the community is going to show its values. And hopefully the community will be there to support what we need to do.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
And I also want to recognize the deputy chiefs that are, that are here as well for police and fire. Thank you for being here and being such strong supporters. And Health and Community Services, Kristen Kennedy and David Field and Linda and Wendy, everybody that's taken this very seriously.
I have one question for Connor. When is the next change memo ballpark? I know there's some things...
I'm playing for March 24th.
March 24th, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So moving on to item seven, after all of that, you know, if you've been following the PACE committee, we're talking about, there's only, there's really only two ways to solve this problem. It's either cuts or it's an override or maybe a combination of the two. So I, I'm, on item seven, we wanted to talk about a discussion and vote for an intention to offer voters a choice of an override contingent budget on the annual town meeting warrant pending a final recommendation of PACE. So we don't want to jump out ahead of PACE, but it's kind of hard to... but it's kind of hard to pretend we don't know what direction this is going in at this point. We really did spend months trying to figure out, first of all, is there a problem? What is the problem? What is the size of the problem? And what are we going to do to fix the problem? And we did that collectively with the whole, the whole team, and I think it was an amazing process. Nobody can say that, that they didn't have a chance to put forth an idea during that period of time. So Connor, did you want to?
Sure, thanks, Dottie. Yeah, this is one of those things that sounds kind of unyieldy and bureaucratic, but under the law, the select board has the authority to vote to call for an override election. I'm not asking you do that right now. It would be premature for the reasons we've talked about. What I think is important as folks start engaging with this process and engaging with PACE is, I am of the belief that the more certainty that we can lay out to the public during a really uncertain and difficult budget, the better. And that includes things as basic as like calendars, right? And some of that's on us, and we're working hard. We advance the budget by a month, but we're working with the schools to identify what are those key dates in April for the school committee budget hearing, for the finance committee budget hearing. We know that town meeting is May 19th. And what I'm asking for the board to do, Dottie, to your point, we're members of PACE, is to just make clear, if it is your position, that if PACE finishes their report in four weeks and says, we recommend that, in addition to reducing budgets by this much, you put an override in front of voters, that it would be your intent to give voters that choice. I can't say choice enough, because it's such a sensitive and hard topic for folks, for the reasons that Tom and everyone on this board has identified. But I think the board letting the public know that whatever your position is on that, as far as whether you would intend to give that. That woke me up. Just making clear that what those choices will be for folks. Again, that's not the same thing. You're not scheduling an override tonight. I'm simply asking about if it is your opinion that PACE ultimately lands there, that you, we'll go through the process to give voters that choice before July 1st.
Well, I think that, you know, it's tricky when we're down to the wire on this, because we do have to finish up with the budget, and then to, if we do move an override budget forward, we have to have a special budget for that as well. We also need 30 or 35 days to call for an election.
You do, you need to. That's correct.
So if we wait till town meeting, and we determine based on the temperature of town meeting, that that's when we want to call for an override, it's going to be like two days before the end of June. So it'll be right before the fiscal. That's cutting it kind of close, especially when we're talking about people and jobs and families. So I feel like, from my perspective, as soon as, as soon as we are more comfortable and know that's the direction we were going to go in, we, I would like to call that as soon as possible, if that's the direction we're going in, so that we can have a little bit of time on it. What are your thoughts about, is the board in agreement that we would act on the recommendation on the PACE Committee?
I'm in agreement, and I'm just going to second what you said, is that the more certainty we can give people in uncertain times is helpful, right? We do, we all know we're up against a tough decision, so I would, I would like to broadcast that.
I agree. I believe that PACE was, PACE was comprised of members of this community. The dialogue and the outputs of that are data-driven. They've turned no stone over. So I, I trust, and I've been following what the group has been talking about. I believe it's very important to be transparent and open about what this process looks like right now. I so badly don't want this to happen, but it's the reality we're living in right now. So yes, I support it, but not very lightly.
I say it again, that we ask PACE to take a look at everything that we do, and they've done a remarkable job under Tom and Nancy's leadership. And I think that if, the intent was for them to look at what's going on, and so I think we have to support what they, what they recommend.
And it's what town meeting voted and wanted to do, too. So we heard it directly from people. In fact, one of the members of PACE has approached me to say, can we keep this going even afterwards, to keep this conversation going? And, you know, I hope it's not every other week. But I definitely think that this is a conversation that we should be having, and, you know, people should be interested in. All right, Craig, do you want to make a motion so that we can formally vote about an intention to offer voters a choice of an override contingent budget on the annual town meeting warrant pending a final recommendation of PACE?
You said it. I'll, I'll second that motion, Dottie.
Well, why don't you make the motion, and someone can second it?
So I, so I.
Just say, so moved.
I move to, to, for the select board to declare our intent to offer the choice to voters via the contingent budget at the May 19th town meeting, and to be determined, to be a determined override election.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we are looking at the discussion and vote setting of select board fiscal 2026 license fees.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. We touched on this in the budget discussion. The majority of select board license fees have remained static for at least 10 years. While the town strives to be friendly to business, we cannot afford to overlook revenue streams heading into fiscal '26. Other town departments are reviewing their fee schedules as well and recommending increases where possible. We've, my, our staff have put together a proposed schedule and a survey from local towns, included in a revised schedule is a fee for a new farmer's market pouring permit, which is based on a law that was signed to allow farmer brewers, prob brewers and distillers to apply to local licensing authorities for a farmer's market permit. I'll be honest, Sean and Elizabeth did all the work on this, so if there are questions, I am not going to answer them. If the board has any questions, I'm sure they can provide them. But again, we don't, we don't take this choice lightly, but given where we are, and how long it has been, I think it's appropriate.
Well, I think the trickle-down thing is that people who use these licenses are also feeling the impact of budget constraints. And I think that this is very thoughtful and modest change. It's not going to close a $5 million budget gap, but I feel like we have to do a little bit in every area that we can.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any comments on this?
I agree.
Right.
So I move to recommend the board vote to adopt the proposed fee schedule for fiscal year 2026.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. I just want to really give you a lot of thanks, Sean and Elizabeth. This is a lot of work to go through these, and we recognize that and appreciate it. Next, discussion and vote, approve the issuance and other details of the general obligation bonds and the amount of $30 million dated March 5, 2025, and the bond anticipation note of $15,464,000, no, $15,464,934,000 dated March 6, 2025, and to sign related closing documents.
Sorry to jump right in front of you both right away, but for the folks who are still following on Zoom, this is exactly what one of those questions touched on. So I would just appreciate the, making sure we're delineating the exempt debt here, CPA-funded debt or enterprise-funded debt, which is, I believe, most of what we're here to discuss.
It is, yes.
Okay. I think we've got the bright spot in the evening. I feel like there's a little dark cloud, but be that as it may, on February 11th, the town went out to bid for our annual borrowing. It's a $30 million bond for the public safety building complex and a $15,464,000, not, yeah, $934,000 bond anticipation note. And that's for a variety of projects that I'll get into later. We received a number of very favorable bids. The win, the ban had a winning bid of a net interest cost of 2.809%, which is lower than the 3.21 that we got last March at this time. The bond had a winning bid of an average interest cost of 4.08%, which is good news, because that's less than the 4.25% that we had used in our estimates for that project. So that's good news, coming in with a good rate there. As part of the bid process, Moody's affirmed our AA3 rating for the bond, which is a very, very good rating. And the ban was assigned a rating of MiG 1, which is the best rating that you can get for a bond anticipation note. The bond, the $30 million, is entirely for the public safety building project. That project is going along. They went out for bids. I believe the select board discussed that at the last meeting and approved the general contractor bid. The ban is, the ban is for a number of different projects. Usually, I do discuss that you have bonds, which are permanent financing, and then you have bans, which are temporary financing. The reason that you have temporary and permanent is because you, there are rules assigned to bonding your money. Once you do get a bond, you have to spend the money within a certain amount of time. If you can't be sure that you're going to spend the money in that amount of time, then you get temporary financing and the ban. I provided a memo to the board, and on page two of that memo, it's a good example of how money rolls. You have temporary financing that is just, it's just temporary for right now. It will become permanent eventually. And then we're also going to renew 11, I don't remember the exact number, $11.6 million. Renew that, and that's because we had temporary financing. They're still not ready to be made permanent, and so we're going to roll them, roll the bans, and keep them temporary. So again, it's all timing. You don't want to do it too quickly, but this is a good example of money that's being rolled, new money that's still temporary and permanent financing. It was just a good example of that. Almost half of the ban money is for ongoing water projects, but we're coming down to the end of those. Are you prepared to talk about the CPA and exempt debt, or do you want to, because I have that?
Yeah. I just, well, I just had a breakdown of, of the ban. So the ban is $15 million, but a significant amount of that is for exempt debt. One is a note that we're rolling over for the Blanche Ames Elementary School project. We're going to have to keep rolling that over until that project is closed out, and we get our final reimbursement from the MSBA. So that's $5.2 million. We've got another $6.1 million is all water debt. It's related to the PFOS treatment facilities, water mains, and some water equipment. In addition to that, we've got $1 million that's coming out of CPA. We fund it from CPA for the playground at RO. And, and then finally, you have about $3 million that's coming, that will be funded from the exempt debt budget in the general fund. But of that, $2.4 million, which is 80% of that amount, is related to the school security project. So when you take that away, it's a very small amount that's related to just, you know, regular capital that we had to fund.
And to be clear, for, you know, the board's benefit of a reminder, and the folks still hanging out with us on Zoom, nearly everything I would just itemize there, whether it's CPA, which is its own revenue stream that can't go towards operating budgets, or water-related capital, much related to unfunded mandates for PFOS, comes out of a fee-based program that doesn't impact the operating budgets and can't be redirected to the operating budgets. Similarly, with the exempt debt for Blanche Ames and for the school, for the police fire public works, so.
All right. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, you're not, are you done yet?
I did want to mention that what we would need tonight is a vote by the, by the board. The, the motion is an abbreviated version of the vote. The full text of the vote will be made part of the minutes, because it's considerable.
I appreciate it, too, because I say these motions.
Does anyone on the board have any questions, comments?
I'm just going to, one comment is that, because it comes up, people look at stabilization fund, and they look at that number, and our, you know, objective to grow that and try to meet 10%, you know, at least try to achieve it. It's the cost of borrowing, and this is where it would bite us if we took and tried to take from that and help our operating position, because that would be a temporary fix that could only get us through '26. And now we're left with much higher borrowing costs and potential of losing the credit rating that we worked very hard to build up to this point. So this is something that's going to come up. It comes up every PACE Committee open house, and we need to be able to explain this as coherently as possible, so folks know this isn't just, it's not a slush fund. It is, it's a position that helps us when it comes to.
And Moody's is looking at that. Moody's is observing what we do with our stabilization and our finance plans.
Thank you, both.
No questions or comments, but thank you both. Greg?
No comments. Thank you.
I just want to say, Linda, we only see you a couple of times a year. And I just want the public to know that you are just such a wizard at orchestrating this. I mean, it saves tons of money. You've really done such an amazing job for us, but this is like an example of someone behind the scenes that just does the job, makes so many good things happen. You know, it's, it's a real art and a science to be able to do these things and have some ways to kind of predict as best you can. And you've been doing a really great job, and I don't know that people really know what you, what you do or what your department does, and how big of an impact that is on, on.
I certainly can't take all the credit, but thank you.
Not to be the rain cloud, but I want to know if it is Linda's department that is taking one of the job eliminations in town hall, and dropping from five to four people, which is a 20% reduction in their staff capacity and below where they were in the 90s. So not to be a rain cloud. Linda does amazing work. Her staff do amazing work.
No, but I think it's a.
But this is what I mean when, you know, there are some folks who they walk into town hall now, and they see the sign saying, our office hours have been limited, and think, you know, the town is selectively cutting things to, you know, I suppose, make a point. We don't have anywhere to cut. That doesn't hurt. And so we are now cutting into departments that are involved in multimillion-dollar borrows, which is not sustainable.
In a community that was much smaller in the 90s than it is today, at nearly 26,000 people, the complexity and the expectations were also dramatically lower as well.
But also, even when we've grown so much, you know, over the past few years, we haven't increased our staff to accommodate that. So, you know, when people are like, oh, that's because all, you know, we've got so many new people in the town. That's not it. We didn't, we didn't bring on, you know, 40, 50 more staff, because the, we're doing the same as we did before all these new people came to town, you know? So it's just more pressure.
One more note on that note, and I'm glad you brought it up, is after the changes that we documented tonight, not even accounting for the potential cuts at public safety, our staff levels now are lower than they've been since pre-COVID for the town government.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you so much. We appreciate your awesome news tonight.
Thank you. I think we need a vote, though.
Oh.
I move to adopt the votes prepared by bond counsel in connection with the town's offering of the $30 million general obligation bonds dated March 5, 2025, and the $15,464,934 bond anticipation note dated March 6, 2025, and incorporate the text of the vote of the select board into the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Thanks, Wendy.
All right. Next, a discussion and vote, DPW 2022-24, change order number three, WES Construction for the PFOS Treatment Facility Maintenance and Repairs.
Good evening.
Hi, dear.
So this is a change order for the PFOS treatment plants. The total cost of the change order work was about $88,000, but we've negotiated that down with the contractor and engineer, so the town's responsible for $30,000. This will be paid for out of the water operating budget, and I recommend approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I move to approve DPW 2024-24, change order number three, WES Construction, PFOS Treatment Facility Maintenance and Repairs, the amount of $30,000.
Second.
That's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Contract awards Southeastern Region Services Group, SIRSIJ, for roadway, sidewalk, drainage and related services for the Department of Public Works, Murray Paving, PJ Keating, Pacella Enterprises, Allstate Industrial Markings, Steel Cove Fence, RJ Gabriel, G. Lopes, Gibson Roofs, Malphey, Tascow, RM Pacella, LAL Construction. Gibson Roofs, Malphi, Tasco, RM Pacella, LAL Construction.
This is our annual services bid through our regional Southeastern Regional Services Group, and I recommend approval.
Questions?
Just want to note, that's another regional collaborative, an area where we do have the opportunity to say there, this is a group of, I think, 17 to 20 municipalities.
19, I think.
That do group-based purchasing of certain supplies and services that we know all the public works department needs, so saw, asphalt, things like that, so we can do bulk purchasing at a lower price than if everyone went to market by themselves.
Excellent.
So I move to approve the Southeastern Regional Services Group, recommendations for roadway, sidewalk, drainage, and related services for the Department of Public Works.
Second.
That's Bajra and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. And thank you for all the work that you and the DPW have been doing this winter with our weather conditions.
It's been a long haul.
All right. Next, contract award, IT 2025-05 for Bulletproof Solutions, Office 365 licenses and support.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. We are negotiating some price changes here, so I recommend this be tabled for your next meeting.
Okay. Do we, do we need a vote to table that? Might as well.
Yeah, I'm not certain. We don't do it much.
I move to table item IT 2025-05, Bulletproof Solutions Incorporated, Office 365 licenses and support.
Second.
Bajra and Stacy, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Authorized Town Administrator to Accept the Community Compact Grant for Expedited Permitting.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. I'm requesting the board authorize me to accept a $40,000 grant from the state, from a community compact program. Community compact program is a state-run program where they allow municipalities with good proposals to enter into best practices and receive either technical, in-kind support, or direct financial support from the state to pay for these programs, to make sure that we're doing things as efficiently as we possibly can be. It won't beat a dead horse tying that back to the budget again, but I think the necessity of doing these things is clear. This is a grant that the planning department wrote. This would fund the town bringing in a development consultant to conduct a review and analyze our processes for permitting developments and for the timelines on permitting, looking at the administration that we're doing. We've made some improvements with online permitting, things of that nature. It's really important we provide reliable permitting for folks, but we always can do better, and so this would give us funding from the state to make sure that we're doing the best we can with the limited staff resources we have to get projects in and out the door appropriately.
Great.
I move to authorize the town administrator to accept Community Compact Grant, Expedited Permitting, in the amount of $40,000.
Second.
That's Bajra and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, we have an appointment to the Taxation Aid Committee. Cassidy Reedy has applied to join that committee for a term expiring June 30, 2025. Cassidy is a full-time student. She works in accounts payable, and she's currently majoring in accounting. I think it's very exciting to have a student reach out to want to be on this committee, and it's a very rewarding committee to be on, so if somebody would like to make a motion in a second, and then it will be a roll-call vote.
I move to appoint Cassidy Reedy to the Taxation Aid Committee with a term expiring June 30, 2025.
Second.
That's Bajra and Stacy.
Stebbins Reedy.
Stacy Reedy.
Full Janetti Reedy.
Bajra Reedy.
Terrific. That's unanimous. Next, we have an acceptance of resignation from Donna Welch, the Human Resources Board, and that term expires June 30, 2027. We want to thank Donna for her great work and time that she's devoted to the Human Resources Board, and express our appreciation. So we would take a motion, a second, and a roll-call vote on this one.
Move to accept the resignation of Donna Welch from the Human Resources Board with a term expiring June 30, 2027.
Second.
That's Bajra and Stacy.
Stebbins Welch.
Stacy Welch.
Full Janetti Welch.
Bajra Welch.
Thanks. An acceptance of resignation for Lauren Model for the Committee for Climate Action Planning. That term expires June 30, 2027. Also want to thank Lauren for their time on that committee, and we appreciate the commitment.
Move to accept the resignation of Lauren Model for the Committee for Climate Action Planning, the term expiring June 30, 2027.
Second.
That's Bajra and Stacy.
Stebbins Model.
Stacy Model.
Full Janetti Model.
Bajra Model.
Okay. Next, acceptance of the minutes of February 10, 2025.
So move, Bajra.
Second.
Bajra and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Town Administrator notes.
Just want to re-invite everyone to join us at the open house Wednesday at Blanche Ames from 6 to 8. There's a ton of information online on our website, I believe there's a ton of information on our social media accounts. There's childcare available, there is parking available, we will have shuttling available. We want folks to come out and participate in these conversations. It won't be you sitting there and listening to me give a 30-minute PowerPoint, which I'm sure everyone will be relieved. Well, it'll be, first half hour, folks can come in and just talk with the chiefs, one-on-one. If they want to hear me talk more about tax levies, they can come talk to me, speak with the superintendent, members of our educators association, our unions, the residents of PACE, who've put in so much time, some of them first-time volunteers for a town board. There will be a presentation from a committee with a Q and A, and then we'll have more of a kind of one-on-one conversations with staff, PACE members, members of the public. So we really hope to see people come out. If you're following along for a first time, please go to easton MA.us/pace, P-A-S-E, and come join us Wednesday night. I also want to express my condolences to the Doherty family. Carol was a real friend to Easton. I've worked with a lot of lawmakers in my career. She was a really, just a good, honest person who cared about public service. She gave a lot to her community. She gave a lot to education. She really cared about Easton, and she would joke before redistricting when I think she had one precinct, she never stopped her from coming to every event here, never stopped her from taking every call from myself or the superintendent or department heads about public safety funding, about state aid. And she was, she was one of the good ones, and so my heart goes out to her family and to all the folks that she represents here in Taunton.
Thank you. That was very nice. Sean?
Nothing else to add, other than we, for the open house on Wednesday, we do, we do have a know-before-you-go document that outlines the current shuttle situation, drop-off location, maps, so folks can know how to navigate the campus for that.
And where is that?
That's on the PACE website as well, at easton MA.us/pace.
Is that going to be on social, too?
It will be, yeah.
And we put it out on the Town Crier today as well.
Yeah, if people are still listening, definitely sign up for the Town Crier. That's, you know, I mean, yes, also on social media, but people aren't necessarily on, all people are not on that, but the Town Crier is a really important place to get your information, and you can get to that by going to the town's website on the homepage at www.easton MA.us. Scroll down, and you'll see a link to sign up for the Town Crier. Select Board notes.
Reiterate, PACE, so thank you, Connor, for laying all that out there, as well as condolences to the Doherty family.
No updates other than just a thank you to the town staff for the work they've been putting in, that's above and beyond right now with the work we're going through with the budget situation.
I just want to reiterate something that Tom Broussard said, and that was that the, we recognize that any increase in people's taxes could impact a great number of people in this town, and that that was one of the reasons why Tom and Mark Lamb recommended the Taxation Aid Committee back a number of years ago, and we've been able to help a lot of families in this town, and so that we recognize the impact. So I just wanted to make sure that people heard that again.
Thank you. All right, well, we have an executive session under purpose three of Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, to discuss strategy with respective collective bargaining with all town bargaining units. And so we are going to adjourn into executive session, not to come back to open session. So thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I want to thank ECAF for always being here, doing such a great job capturing all our meetings, and we have a lot of them, so thank you very much, Joe.
So I move to go into executive session.
Second.
So that's Bajra and Stacy, and a roll-call vote?
Stebbins, yes.
Stacy, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Bajra, yes.
All right.